Everyone, my name is Jeremy Hooper and I'd like to call to order the Planning and Zoning Board regular meeting of January 5th, 2023. The time is now 3:59. I'll point out that we currently have seven members of the board here with us. We do expect the eighth to show up, just a little bit tardy. And with that, let's have everyone introduce themselves, beginning on my right.
Paul Roberts.
Julia Latham.
David Alzamora.
Matt Jones.
And with us today from staff, we have Darren Burridge, Maria Carpenter, Alex Cameron, and Alfred Cassidy. Welcome, everyone. I'll go ahead and remind everyone that planning on speaking on the board today, though, please speak clearly and directly into the microphone at all times as we're being audio recorded and video recorded, so please speak clearly and directly. With that, we'll move to the first agenda item tonight that will follow, and is the approval of the minutes of the 12-1, 2022 regular meeting.
I'm looking to approve with revisions the minutes of December 1st, 2022, regular meeting.
So the motion was to approve with revisions. Do you have revisions, or do you want to amend that motion? Okay. Okay, and you're not on, so let me get you on here real quick. Let's get you on here. Shall I?
They'll get it.
That's a real tricky microphone, so should I assume that your motion is to approve as written?
As written.
But the revisions, I believe, referenced in the motion were sent over by Jack earlier today. There was a misspelling that Shannon's aware of and has corrected.
Okay, so what in fact is with revisions previously noted by Jack? Okay, so do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Louise, second by David. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none opposed, the minutes from the 12-1, 2022 regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Board, planning and zoning board are approved as amended. Now, let's move to the 12-12, 2022 special meeting minutes. Do we have any additions, corrections, or amendments? Hearing none, can I get a motion?
Okay, I move to approve with revisions. Staff will have to tell us what that is, the minutes of the December 12, 2022 special meeting.
Clarity on that, please. No revisions.
No revisions.
Okay.
Mind restating the motion with as written?
It's what?
As written.
As written, yes.
Okay, all right, so a motion made by Louise, second.
Second.
Second, my Matt. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the minutes, the special meeting minutes from 12-12, 2022 are approved as written. Thank you all. Welcome, Jack. So now we'll move on to general business. We have two items on the agenda today. Neither one will require action by the board. The first one is we will discuss Village Place and Pinehurst South forum-based codes. This item is a work session format to discuss the development of the forum-based code for Village Place and Pinehurst South. And with that, I'll turn it over to Darren.
Thank you, Jeremy. Tonight, we're really gonna, we're gonna talk, we're moving to Pinehurst South tonight and to work on the regulating plan for Pinehurst South. Village Place Plan, the document itself is almost, we tried to have it done for tonight's meeting, it's almost done, we're making some final edits to it, so hopefully when we schedule after this meeting, another special meeting in two weeks, we'll have that done so we can just give you the look see at the final document there. We're making some final changes to the table of uses, and then we're making some changes to the lot dimensional standards, so we're hoping to have that for the meeting in two weeks. But for tonight, what we're gonna do, we're gonna move to the Pinehurst South regulating plan, and then we're gonna go through kind of that same process that we did with the Village Place, with the Village Place Plan. The nice thing about this is we've gone through a lot of things that are in the Village Place Plan, with the exception of the regulating plan and some of the lot standards, a lot of that stuff is gonna be the same, it's gonna carry over. So we've done a lot of the hard lifting already on the Pinehurst South Plan, but form-based code, but really tonight, we wanna, the regulating plan is really that, is one of the more important documents, that and the table of uses, so we're gonna start tonight going through the regulating plan, and then hopefully the next week, we'll have the table of uses done. Maria and Alfred are gonna be working on that to get that done, so we can go over that like we did the last time, to go over, you know, the primitive uses in each of the districts. So let's, we're gonna start going through this, going through the regulating plan block by block, and get your feedback and thoughts. And what you have, the documents that you have, we gave you the most recent copy of the Pinehurst South Plan. That copy, the maps that were, that had been updated based on the council's recommendation, and the reason we gave you these two, we excerpted these two maps for you, these two ones? Okay, they're the ones that are titled Build Out Plan Scenario Low, then you have Build Out Plan Scenario High. So what happened is when the council moved forward with approval of this, but what happened is, what we did was we took the low intensity development, to develop the preferred build-out plan, what we did is we took the low intensity, the low intensity recommendation for the east side of NC-5, and we built that into the preferred plan, and then we kept the high intensity on the west side of Highway 5. And that's really where you have, you have, the majority of those lands over there are zoned for multiple family use. So those both went into the creation of the preferred build-out plan. And if you look at the preferred build-out plan, the really, the only difference that you see is in the southern sector between H and J and G and I, that all became recommended in this plan for single-family, detached, single-family. What's gonna happen is that will be reflected in the regulating plan as we move forward. Any questions before we embark on this journey? Yard by yard.
Can you remind us what the status of our development freeze is in this area?
It is, the moratorium, glad you brought that up. The moratorium is still in place, the moratorium expires on February 3rd. We'll be talking, we'll be talking to the council about this in work session next week. We will likely, we'll be scheduling a public hearing for the first, or the second meeting in January to potentially extend it. We don't have to, we don't have to, we don't, we're just calling it right now to make sure we get it scheduled on the books. We don't, we could always pull that public hearing back, but we wanted to make sure we got it scheduled on the books before the moratorium actually extended. The nice thing about where we are, where we are right now is we have, we have the Pinehurst South Plan done, we have the Village Place Plan done. We're, again, working on those final edits, we're going to have, I should have them done for council next week. So we have two plans that are essentially done. We will have a, that are done, I should say, that will guide future development in these areas. We also have the Village Place Forum Place Code, which is essentially done, and that is another guide. So what we have is if the moratorium lifts, we have two plans in place that will guide future development. So what's gonna happen in most of these areas, the existing zoning that's in these areas, the plans themselves are an incentive kind of to change the zoning that's there, because the existing zoning is very restrictive. So what would happen is, basically, anybody wanting to come in and do anything relative to these plans are going, you see it all the time, they're gonna have to come in, they're gonna have to request a conditional zoning. So that conditional zoning, what could happen is, if we don't get the code changes done ahead of that for the forum-based code, that could be the guide for those developments moving forward. So that's, that's kind of, you know, what we've been talking about, of how the plans, the plans can serve as a good basis for development moving forward, especially, you know, especially in the Pinehurst South area where you have a lot of vacant lands, and you have a lot of vacant lands that, you know, there's an issue potentially with the base zoning, whether it be neighborhood, commercial, or OP, allowing for more, this is just air quotes, more intense forms of development. I'm not saying that's gonna happen, but, but when you look at it, when you look at the plan, the plan calls for a little bit more compact urban, urban, compact development, compact neighborhood development, and then that's gonna require zone changes. So that's where these plans will come into place. Alex, you got anything to, any other comments on that, you're thinking?
On the moratorium?
Yes, or anything in general before we head off.
And I think you expanded pretty well on things where we are now, and then where we're potentially gonna go forward, but Darren and I feel confident with what we have in place now, that there is an incentive there for, if the moratorium was lifted, for if someone wanted to propose development in these areas, they have an idea of what we're looking for, at a minimum.
And we've, you know, we've talked to a few people about, you know, people looking at potential development in that area, and it would require zone changes for the things that they are talking about, whether it be a dimensional standard, whether it be a density standard, whether it be an SIA, they have to come in for that. So all those things, they all will result in, you know, people having to look at evaluating a potential development to these plans that are out there. So, any other questions?
I have one question. I missed a couple of the meetings when you were discussing this, but wasn't there, like, if, I'm looking at the Build Out Plan Scenario One Low as an example, A through E, wasn't that supposed to be multi-use? Wasn't there originally discussed that there would be multi-use with the apartments and the commercial retail spaces below?
Are you talking, which side, you're talking on the east side, A, B, C, D?
East side, yeah, A through E.
Those are shown as, and we're gonna have that discussion tonight, that it would allow for mixed use in those areas. So mixed use would allow for a mixture of uses, which could allow residential on top and commercial retail on the bottom. That's, I think that's a point that we're gonna talk about tonight when we get through into the regulating plan, because there still is some concern about potential, about mixed use, potentially about retail in some of those areas, and we're gonna, and we're going to suss through that tonight.
Okay. Yeah, and I guess the other thing too is, and you probably mentioned this, but when I look at low and high versus the preferred, what's the three, you know, what differentiates the three sketches here?
Really becomes, when you look at, it's really what's happening on the east side of NC-5 below Blake Boulevard.
So that's the difference.
So yeah, if you look at the high intensity plan, below Blake Boulevard, you see that really what's showing, really as you get down to the southern part, towards our net street, you're showing, we're showing townhouses down on that side.
Okay, yep.
Potentially down, townhouses, a single-family attached, things like that, that's what we're showing on the southern part. So that's, and the low is single-family detached, so it's less density.
Yep, got it, thank you.
You're welcome. Jack?
Just to follow on Matt's question on the moratorium, the moratorium on the Village Place could be lifted while the moratorium is still in place for Pinehurst South, is that correct?
That's correct.
Because Village Place, much of our plan had to do with the property owned by or controlled by the village and or Moore County, so.
Correct. That's correct, you can change, you know, potentially the terms or exemptions could change within the ordinance, or you could just say, yeah, Village Place is far enough along, we don't need the moratorium in there, and we just wanna maintain it in Pinehurst South, so those are, those are the options.
And we're closer to the forum-based code, being a little more mature there, okay.
In Village Place, we definitely, we definitely.
Right.
Any other questions? Jeremy? All right, I was looking at you. All right, so let's start. Alex, you wanna, you wanna start out, and then I'll pair in later?
Sure, so from the discussions we have with Village Place, similar format here with this regulating plan, we have blocks, A through, maybe K, looks like. Don't get caught up too much on the colors, or the type of color, the shading, that's an easy adjustment, or which block is A or B or C, but what we wanna look at is, within each block, look at the building height, and look at the proposed uses, same key and table that we use for Village Place, so should be pretty familiar, so we'll just start with Block A.
Which is, Block A is right here, it's just south of Monticello.
Or to Blake, yep.
And this is kind of that core area, so if you go through the Pinehurst South Plan, this is where those renderings where they're trying to create that kind of activity, more, maybe more retail, more restaurants, things like that in this area, just building off this as the original core. I can't remember what pages they are in Pinehurst South, but they're, they're one of the couple renderings that are in there that show, I think they show the use of, that kind of that garage structure as like a farmer's market or incubator, we show a coffee shop down there, office, things like that, so that's the, that's this core, that's the core area that Alex is talking about.
So A is bounded by Monticello, Blake, and what is it?
Dawn.
Dawn, yeah.
Dawn, yeah, relatively on Dawn on the east, Blake, Parker, Parker on the east.
Or does it actually bounded by Route 5, Route 5, Blake, and Monticello?
Kinda, because if you look at the red, the block is, the way, the kind of that burgundy color, that's meant to be, the colors are supposed to match up a little bit with the, with the blocks, and really where you have that, this, right along here is the railroad corridor, so it's really, it's really bordering, the west is really bordering on the railroad corridor. So you have that corridor, then you have Highway 5 right next to it.
And the current location of Quail Haven, it would be?
Right here.
Be included in that, is that correct?
As of right now, we were excluding Quail Haven, because if you look at.
You're gonna ask about the white versus on the.
In fact, we, the whites we were, we're showing, should we exclude these areas, because they're already relatively developed? We don't have to, but we are recommending to just to exclude that and exclude Trotter Hills, because Trotter Hills is relatively built out already.
And the Pinehurst South cottages.
And the, well, Pinehurst South cottages, correct, because that subdivision is moving forward now.
So that is also the area with the pond that tends to flood quite heavily. Is that pond currently part of any sort of water management plan or anything for that area?
Not, Alex, I'm not aware of it, you're talking about, it's right here, I believe, isn't it? Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure, the only thing I know is I think it floods, when it, it floods the little dowed cabin there every once in a while.
Sure, sure. So if a development plan came to place, there's, where I'm going is, there's a free path to include, you know, would they be able to wipe that, and then would we be able to consider water management from a different level, or what's really? I would think so, what you're dealing with there is, you know, infrastructure and all that was installed without regulations that we even have, probably none at all.
Yeah, probably.
So any type of that development would trigger all our needs, so it would be an opportunity. All those steps to participate in that, okay.
And before you go, the roads shown are, in most cases, existing, in some cases, proposed.
That's a good point, you made, you raised a good point, we should, it appeared, yeah, it does muddy it a little bit, maybe we need to on the next rendering show, figure out how we show, how the, because you're right, the stuff, if you take, I mean, these are, I believe all these are existing roads with, currently. This road we show is a potential realignment of Monticello, or Monticello, and then you get all these roads down into Blake South, and these would all be proposed, proposed new roads. So, yeah, we might need to shade that as, shade that as a different color going forward, so we'd, so we just know, it'd be helpful going forward. In Village Place, we pretty much know where all the existing roads were, so it's easy, but this area is kind of remote into the south, so this is all relatively new. I think we're showing some new proposed roads over on the regulating plan on the west side, so we can, we can make that adjustment.
And I recall one testimony, if you will, from a member of the public, was a member of CAS, actually, who reminded us that that's a private road on the other side of the.
Right here. Yes.
Liquor store.
And we, and we did make, in the Village Place Plan, we did make the adjustment on the illustrations, to make it clear that it is private, and that, it doesn't look.
Currently private, yeah.
Currently private, we just gotta make that note. So that's why we're having this discussion, so thank you, this helps us moving forward with making some adjustments.
Okay, I didn't mean to confuse you.
No, no, you didn't confuse, that's helpful.
There's a lot going on in here, you know, and you have to kind of decide.
And you're right, if you, if you're just, if you're a member of public and you don't even, and you haven't looked at these plans at all, you're looking at it, and you're potentially thinking, wow, these roads are already existing, this is a pattern that's already in place. Well, it's not a pattern that's in place, so we should make sure that we, that we color-code or we shade appropriately, so people know that moving forward, that this is not, this development plan, this development pattern doesn't exist. It's a development plan, and it was recommended as part of the planning process, because it logically, logically, you know, divides up this area, but it doesn't, because we can't map it, we can't require it, we're just showing that this is the potential development in the future, we just can't.
Especially when the blocks, the boundary of the blocks, in some cases, are roads that do not exist, so it's.
That's correct.
Betting on the come that they'll actually happen that way, right?
That's correct, and what we're doing, the example that we've seen in other communities is, you still, you always have the underlying zoning, or you have the underlying configuration, and what happens is they'll adopt the regulating plan as a separate document that shows the potential for roads. So if somebody comes in and develops it, it's actually in the plan that said, this is where we would like the roads, but they can't mandate it. So you'd always, so if there's a road right now, and it doesn't get developed, there's gonna be a land use under there. So if that road doesn't get developed, the land use that are on either side have to be, have to allow both of them, have to allow any of those uses in the area. I think we've done a pretty good job at that in, down in this area, because if you look at the building types, the building types are all pretty similar in that area, and building types will lead to land use, and the only difference is probably the hotel that we're showing in that area.
Similarly, can you remind me, there's something unusual about Olivia Lane. It was disputed ownership, or was it private, was it public?
It's not, it's not public, it's private.
It's private, okay.
It's private, correct, and there's jurisdiction, there's potential jurisdictional issues down there, so there's, there's a lot of, there are some unknowns with Olivia Lane that, you know, that discussion came out with Pinehurst Cottage's subdivision.
Right.
So as of right now, yeah, it continues to be a private road, it's, it also is an emergency access that we maintain, that goes back to the back gate of CCNC. It's also the area that would, that as part of this process, we had recommended, you know, potentially closing off our net and making Olivia the future connection to establish that four-way, kind of more of a four-way stop here at Dawkins for this area.
Have we ever gotten a definitive answer from the railroad as to which crossing they prefer long-term?
My discussions with them, and I think the discussions that the consultant had with them, it was, I think the, that I had heard was Olivia. Now, that is, may have changed, but my discussions were, had been Olivia.
I've heard at least two or three different variations on that.
It depends on what they got going on, apparently, but that was the latest. But originally, when I talked to them, they could make either work as well.
Was, was part of that decision tied to what was gonna happen with the houses in the new element at the rear, or is that on hold now too?
This one, the Pinehurst South cottages? No, that's gonna, that should.
But part of the discussion was either with flow or sprinklers in the.
They've met the requirement.
Yeah, they've met, they've met the requirements.
There's, there's emergency access gate as well, off Olivia, that's siren activated, so they met it.
So I know what you said about Trotter Hills, but there are undeveloped lots in Trotter Hills, so.
There's only a couple.
But even, I guess even still, thinking about how we did Village Place, I mean, we certainly had developed lots that we included in, in the blocks. I'm just wondering, for consistency, should Trotter Hills, as well as the lots adjacent to Quail Hollow that aren't owned by Quail Hollow on Parker Lane, those four that are developed, if those should also be included in blocks?
Let's, let's start with Trotter Hills on the west. I think that, I think the reason is, there's, in Village Place, we were anticipating redevelopment. We were anticipating that those areas would be scraped, and new development's gonna, it's gonna take its place, kind of like along, think along McIntyre, think along McIntyre, think along Rattlesnake, Lower Rattlesnake, and then potentially, as you go up the west side of Rattlesnake, that's gonna be new development. In Trotter Hills, you've got, you've got a pretty well-established development pattern in there, so nothing, and you're not gonna go through a period of redevelopment at any point, so putting a strict forum-based code on three lots, that, three or four lots that may be existing in there, we didn't think made, we didn't think made a whole lot of sense at this time.
If the lots that were abutting Highway 5 or otherwise, maybe have been clearly vacant, I mean, right now, I just did a quick count from what I know, what applications we have in, or otherwise, there are six lots that are left, because some of them have been balled up and combined as well, and they're, they're scattered throughout, there's some on the northern boundary, the northeast corner, and then one interior lot still remains, and then one just right there.
We just had this, yeah. This one?
To the east.
This one.
That's Moore County Wellsite, at least in the one corner, at least there was, I don't know if it's still active, yeah, okay.
And you have, you do have an eclectic set of developments, architecture in here, and setbacks, and things like that, so we thought, you know, we can, we can always add it back in at the end of the process if we want to, but we thought to start out, we would exclude it for now, based on, based on that reasoning.
Makes sense.
Now, what were, now what was number two?
There, on the east side of Parker Lane, those lots.
Oh, good point. Oh, that is, these right here. Yep, that's a good catch. I mean, they're already developed.
Right.
And I don't know if they're gonna go away, but that's something.
I mean, Clark Chevrolet was already developed, and I think we put it in a block.
Yeah, we did, and this was, this, this, we just missed on this one. I mean, that's already developed, these are all, as far as I know, offices along here for the most part, but yeah, we should probably put something in there, just in case, just to balance out the other side of Block, it can be, it could potentially be part of Block A.
Yeah.
Yep. See, that's why we have these conversations. Thank you. Anything else? Good for now?
No, yeah, sorry.
All right. Any other questions? All right, Alex, take it away.
I believe the next block would be B, Darren.
We, yeah, we wouldn't go into, we didn't go into, we didn't go into everything in Block A yet. Now we're gonna go.
You called for questions. Everyone fine with Block A, building height, building types? Building height, one to two stories, building types, either mixed use, office or retail?
So, and the reason why we also gave you that, these two other plans, was to kind of show what we were envisioning, so you can kind of match up with what's in the Pinehurst South Plan, with what's in, what's in the regulating plan. So yeah, we're proposing, because it's, because this is supposed to be the truly, you know, kind of the core area, the mixed use, office and retail are the three types of, three types of building types that we were proposing in that area. We'll go, as we move forward like we did with the Village Place, we'll do that table of uses, and we'll more, we're more honed in on the uses, but this is what we're showing from regulating standpoint, and the building heights. I just didn't, I just took longer to say that than Alex did.
And B, B is bounded by the railroad or Route 5, and what is designated as Page Road, although recognizing that's a private road and a proposed road more than anything, is that correct?
Correct.
And that's the same configuration, but includes a hotel. That's the only place in this village south where a hotel appears as a.
And the building height is extended to three stories there as well, that's the, two changes from Block A.
Even with a hotel, it would still be a one through three?
What are, what are your thoughts on that?
I'm just saying, would we expect a hotel to be built there and only be three stories high?
Yeah, I mean, I think we're already, what is that, that zone, probably NC? So NC, the, I think, NC, so the max height, max height there already is 35 feet.
Okay.
Well, I think the popularity of a hotel, I think, is something to have, have a discussion.
Well, I think the popularity of a hotel, I think, is something to have a discussion on. But when we look at the land opportunity in that area for a hotel, where, where would we be looking at currently today? Because there's, there's currently some, I don't know.
Well, the road, the road doesn't exist. I mean, and it cuts through, cut through, uh, lots that are already, it cuts through the middle of a lot, doesn't it? Middle of a parcel that's...
Which one? Page Street that we're showing extended?
I mean, these really, these roads don't bound parcels as of today, right? The parcel boundaries are different from where the roads are, is that correct?
I, I think you're, I think you're correct. We, we, we can pull that, but I think you're correct. Again, they're just, they're papers, at this point, they're just, they're just a proposed paper street, just a, and the reason why, the reason why they kind of jut out, I believe, is based on, A, that there's some existing development there that might not go away, and B, the ability to actually put development along both sides of the road. So you could, you could actually orient, if you wanted to, you could orient things more out to Highway five, which you're not going to get access to, or you could orient everything towards Page Street. So it gives you, I think it gives you the ability to front either way.
Right.
But again, there's, there's nothing, is, these roads don't have to happen. It's just a, it's just a potentially, you know, we'd say a preferred layout for roads or a developable layout. I mean, somebody could theoretically come in here, buy this, they wouldn't have to deal with, Page Street Extended, wouldn't have to do any of this, and just access off of Blake, Blake Boulevard and just put a large development in there. Just with no roads, anything, could just be a large potential development. I don't think that's something that we'd prefer. We'd prefer some layout where you'd get a mixed use, but, but we can't mandate, because we don't have official mapping statute, really, we can't mandate these roads to, to occur.
If we're gonna...
Well, are we, are we done with B?
Well, good to me.
If we're gonna propose, um, mixed use, I mean, and then restrict ourselves to one or two stories, I mean, does that, seems illogical a little bit.
We're not, we're not restricting to one or two stories south of Blake Boulevard. We're showing one to three stories.
Okay.
I mean, we, we didn't have that discussion in the core area to the north. Here, we, we didn't have that discussion, so...
You see where I'm getting to?
Yeah. No, I just, I, I understand. I mean, one or two might not, no, I, people might prefer to put up a three-story buildings. Where, three-story is technically allowed in both of these zoning districts, because you can get up to 35 feet. Problem with the way we measure, the way we measure, um, height, is it might truncate the roof line, and you might get a bunch of flat roof buildings up there that would be allowable. I don't think it's the preferred type of building in, in the Village of Pinehurst or in the area. I think we still, if, if you look at the architectural standards that we're proposing in the Village Place Plan, it's mostly, it's mostly hips, mansards, you know, it's pitched roofs.
So with a three-story building, what was the, what would be the allowable building height?
Three-story? Three-story.
Thirty-five? Oh, I mean, I do see the three stories.
Three-story.
Would that be a 35? Be taller?
Well, we might have, if we want pitched roofs on a three-story building, we might have to look at how, how we measure, how we, um, how we, how we measure height, per our PDO. Or it might be something where we come in and it's a, it's something that we measure as part of a conditional rezoning, something like that.
We're also in the village. Um, can you give us a little bit of insight where three-story buildings are, are else allowed currently, other than the hospital district?
They're allowed pretty much anywhere, anywhere that's zoned VMU, which would be a larger Village Place area.
Yeah.
Go out to, on Jack's neighborhood along Highway 211, where it's zoned OP. It'd be allowed up there, be allowed down here. Hotel, the hotel district. So yeah, there's, there's a lot of places where, but VMU, I think, can actually get up to 50, can't it?
VMU's 50, yeah.
Yeah, VMU's actually 50 feet. And if you remember, in the Village Place Plan, we kind of retracted that down to three stories, but we also have a man, we also have a minimum height requirement, a minimum story requirement in Village Place, in that core area of a minimum two stories in most of that area. So, from a height standpoint is, and we'll get to it, you know, when we get, again, block, block by block is one to two, are, are we thinking that we need to go higher in this area or to potentially allow higher to match the zoning, or, or is that not what, not what we're preferring? I think we started with one and two in this area, just because I think that was the, the majority of that development pattern, just in this area in general, is two-story. Is one or two-story.
But it doesn't mean if somebody came in and had a three-story plan, they couldn't submit for...
They couldn't.
...separation or adjustment.
That's correct. They couldn't, like anything, anything is subject to change through the, potentially legislative process. I think the thought potentially was, if you mix a bunch of one, there's, the, the predominant pattern is one-story in this area. So if you start, if you start adding three-story buildings throughout that area, it starts to, the whole thought of the regulating plan and the form-based code can get thrown out, because you got a building one-story over here, you got three stories over here, so it starts to, it, it doesn't look as planned as, as I think, as I think the code wants it to be.
I don't think having the, the limited two, I mean, might bring some more creative buildings forward. I mean, it'll make you think about the plan, so I think it's a requirement that you have to, you know, have one use above the other, however it's envisioned, so... I think two's reasonable there, and then, you know, kind of builds up to the rest of it, so... I think allowing three stories all over, you could run into some of the, you know, character issues that we were discussing.
I do think it, it's important for us to kind of discuss B and C together, certainly since Page Road is, is really not, you know, a, a road yet that's, that's designed here. And, um, so those building heights kind of bring over that conversation together. And my, my, kind of going back to the hotel focus, I'm kind of assuming or envision that this area of blocks B and C could very well be part of one development plan proposed to the village. So it's something to...
You are correct. And if you look at the building heights and the building types, they're generally, they're generally, the only difference is, I think we're showing live-work unit, live-work, potentially live-work units south of Blake Boulevard. We could, we could easily pull that off and just go one, two, three in, in that particular area.
For a reason.
And, and the other thing you can see, you know, from a building height standpoint, you can see where we're trying to focus that, that kind of larger area or higher buildings. It's really that area south of Blake Boulevard. Really, that, this area in here is the only real area down south, in Pinehurst South where we're focusing, or allowing the potential to have up to three-story buildings. Because this is supposed to be that mixed use. This is real, this is really where the most development's gonna occur, is gonna be in this area, because you have, you have the most new development that can occur right in this 40-plus acres that are vacant.
I, I think this is where the architectural designs that go along with this would be very helpful as well, you know, to refer back to, and what does three-story mean, building heights mean, and, and what's coming into play here. Um, I'm just considering the thought process that, again, very possible of it being one development, you know, piece coming forward to the village. And would there be a reason why we would not want to consider number four in Block C as well? Was there a thought process along this way?
I think we're, we're having a hard time wrapping around our heads around live-work for in Village Place.
In Block C, it is, it is.
Well, it is in Block C, but also moving it over to Block B as well.
Live-work is essentially mixed use.
But the live-work.
That was our conversation, I think, and that was why we wiped it out in some of the, the Village Place areas. We kind of just wiped out number four altogether, so is that really our...
I don't think we could differentiate mixed, uh, live-work from mixed use.
Yeah, we could not.
The friendly tailor living above the tailor shop, you know, which...
Which would be more, which would, Village Place, you could maybe see that happening more often, because there's more, there's maybe more density, more close density of residential development. So it might, it might work, but it could potentially work here. Would we, would we want to throw that out here as a concept? Because it can always, it could always be, it could always, the other zoning allowance is going to be mixed use. So it's always going to be allowed, it, it could be allowed.
I don't think, it's kind of what I was trying to think in my head.
You could add a four there, and it won't, doesn't change much at all.
Yeah, I was trying to think back in my head what the definitions were between mixed use and four, and I don't recall very much at all, and I don't...
It was hard, it was hard to tell.
The major difference is that with, with a live-work unit, what's gonna hap, it's gonna, it's almost like a townhouse. So it's a row of mixed, it's, it's a row of, it's a, it's a townhouse development with mixed uses in it, because each, each storefront is going to be a property line. So it'll be a property line here, property line here, property line here, property line here. With a regular mixed-use development, it's going to be generally one floor, you know, 100 feet wide, a couple boxes in there, and something above it. That's, that's the major difference. It's ownership. It's ownership difference is what it is.
Or kind of limits, um, it's, it's less, less inclusive of, of what seems permitted, because it's also a common tenant. Whoever's living there runs the commercial.
Yes, that too, correct. That's correct.
Yeah, I think having it as an option, but yeah. Especially, yeah, I think for that strip, keeping it as contiguous as possible for the proposed idea, I think's more beneficial.
You talking about B as well, or just in C?
B.
I'm bringing it over in B.
Yeah, I think including it in C is an option, is, is good, especially since some, I think, residential was desirable there. Um, and allowing a hotel use in this area, I think, is important. And if, I, I think where it's placed is pretty optimal, you know, in, in relation to everything else.
You talking about a hotel use in C?
In B.
In B only, okay.
Yeah, because that, that's the only place it's allowed currently, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I think we put it there because it's probably, that would probably be the only place that a hotel's gonna want to, want to locate, because it's gonna be right proximate to
Well, and I think having it, having it as a, as a proposed use up here, period, is important. And yeah, I think it's on the best, best place that it can be.
I'd agree. I was gonna say, if we, if you were to entertain it in C, if we're gonna entertain it at all, first off, I think that's a, I think that we need to spend on that conversation here. And then secondly, considering it in C, I think has the potential of disrupting, you know, some of the other plans for the area, of course.
So I'm hearing we agree with the plan.
Agree with the plan, if we don't want to move four over to B.
So one question on C then. Where is the lower boundary of C? We have this green block, which is the, uh, wouldn't it be nice to have open space? But I don't know whether the, the boundary of C is the top of that or the bottom of that.
Good point. I mean, this is gonna have to be, we're, we're going to have to, we're gonna have to put a building type on here, because we can't just not have, because Park might not happen, right?
You have to have something in there, because that's, uh, we can't guarantee that that's going to be open space.
That's right. So we'll probably have to, we'd probably have to...
We need a designation in that area, is that correct?
Yep, that's correct.
Okay.
Just want to go back and, uh, discuss B, okay, proposal number nine for a hotel. I'm sure Alex is, you know, it...
They're preparing for it.
But, um, you know, if you put a 200-foot, three-story building, um, and you're driving down Highway five, you're not going to be able to see what you're really trying to showcase, you know, in areas, uh, C. You know, you see a lot of hotels now, they're not on the road, they're off the road. There's a lot of stores in smaller areas, boutiques that they're trying to put in front of the hotels, where you see it here now on Highway five, where they built the hotels, and I've seen that through travel. Or the hotel is perpendicular to the main road, you know, so it's not blocking everything behind it. And I'll just, you know, something to think about. You know, if you're, if you're truly trying to showcase, you know, south of Blake Boulevard, if you put a hotel that's a couple hundred feet long, and it's running parallel with Highway five, and it's three stories, you're not going to see anything behind it, you're just gonna see a hotel.
True.
You know, ma- maybe you look at, in the back is where you put the hotel, where, you know, you have to drive through everything, it's gonna give business more visibility.
Yeah, that, but if the, if the hotel use is allowed there, but also mixed use is as well, if you, I mean, I honestly think bumping the allowed height up to four stories there, because then, I'm thinking of in, um, Chapel Hill, the Glenn Lennox area, you drive by, there's the W Hotel there, there's all restaurants and businesses on that first floor. So you're still driving the foot traffic and everything, walkable to everything there and behind. But the, I, I guess the, the front is, is still right on the road. And I think the way this land's situated, there's, there's, there's a way to buffer it a little bit, and it doesn't have to be in one specific footprint. They could, they could split it up accordingly, depending on how they would utilize that space.
It'll certainly block the traffic noise with your large building running parallel with NC five. It'll be quiet behind that hotel.
I mean, you're, you're still gonna allow a number, you still could have a number of other smaller buildings pop up over there. There are two stories as well, or two to three stories as well. So I think, I mean, anything, anything that you're going to do, any development that you're gonna, because you have the office building here, right? So anything that you're gonna do along this, it's gonna, it's gonna be a some, it's gonna diffuse all this stuff generally in here. Unless you allow a large, potentially a larger height here, and you control the height down at this to two, but you still driving up, driving up and down here, I just don't see, I don't think you're gonna see too far into the interior. Your, your immediate view is gonna be right here, right, for the development across here. And I would think...
Well, to Paul's point, though, if you, if we're talking about streets, the street scape view along Route five, and as you enter the Village of Pinehurst, is it important to have a certain street scape, uh, character? Or do you want to just pay no attention to that? Now, you do have the railroad right next to the, right next to the road, so you have to keep that in mind at all times. So, but as you come down Route five, and I'm just envisioning how it is right now, until you get to, um, Blake, um, there's really, you really can't even see off to the right. And yet, once you pass that, there is the now Boys and Girls Club, and there's that different type of office building, but there is a street scape of view off to the right, which is reflective of you're entering the Village of Pinehurst. So how important is that, and does it, does it change your thoughts about building height?
Change thoughts as in that we have a correct height on the plan, or suggesting something different?
I'm not sure. It just, it just is a factor, let's put it that way.
Sure. You know, I think that if we continue to want architecturally, you know, sloped roofs and not flat roofs, which are very popular in a hotel today, um, then, then we gotta imagine that three stories is gonna be higher, four stories obviously higher than that.
But my only point is, this is, this is the gateway into the Village of Pinehurst as you come into five. I mean, there's gateways on 211, there's gateways on, on other, other roads. And to what extent do we care about the, the view on that, on that gateway?
Correct. I mean, but I think some of the, the architectural standards are meant to take care of that. So having higher quality, higher quality buildings, where the parking is placed. Now, parking's gonna be kind of problematic on this one, because you potentially have two frenzies. So as you're coming in, you want, you don't want the old audio, auto-oriented development like you have on the east, west side, right? So you go down from the gas station down to that. That's just, that's old strip mall-style development. That's not what we're trying to promote in this particular area. So I think the architectural standards can help. I think landscaping standards can help, where you're allowed to have the parking can help. Potentially development intensity by having more landscaping. So I think that could help. I think we, we have to imagine that there is gonna be some, this is gonna be developable at some point, right? So trees are gonna come down, this is, this is gonna be redeveloped. So if we have these other standards in place, it should, should improve the look. It's not gonna be like there's nothing there, there's gonna be something there. But if the, if the buildings are, if the buildings are lined up appropriately, set back appropriately, and parking's in the right place, I think it'll mitigate, it'll mitigate some of the concerns that you might have going north. What we're trying to avoid is this, kind of this corner, redeveloping some of this older stuff in the corner.
As popular as Trotter Hills has been, and to the point where it's, what we, we can guess it's gonna be developed at some point near in the future, um, there, there could be some further demand that would kind of go, jump across Highway five into some of this area.
Yes.
And paving a way and an opportunity for that to happen, I think, would be very important before, you know, a large hotel came into place.
Correct.
Maybe to support that type of, of, of office, you know, use. There first, before the demand of a hotel came into place, take of a larger parcel of land, disturbed a lot more around it. And I, and I appreciate this conversation, because I do want to say that, that I want to make sure we don't jump over that topic, because I think it's a certain important topic as a board, you know, the... because I think it's a certain important topic as a board, you know, of a hotel in general. So thanks for letting us stop on that point. But that's one of the things that is kinda going through my mind is, hey, once Trotter Hills is built out, it's been successful, it's been popular, and where can we go with that at that point?
And I think we've talked about that in this, in this particular area as part of this. Could, could Trotter Hills or the Turnberry experience happen in here? I think the answer is yes. I mean, you could have that, you could have offices in here, but you also could have mixed use. You could have some of those other, some of those other things that help to make a neighborhood like a, like some type of retail. So I think it's a large enough area that, yeah, you could have all those type of uses in here. But you'd also have the benefit of having the code in place that would have the architectural standards, that would have the parking standards, that would have the height limitations, all that particular could apply in this area. And it could, that could happen because you have, right now you have the, which is the Mahaly track, it's sitting at 27 acres. That's 27 acres of potentially developable land where you could do another type of Trotter Hills or some type of mixed-use development like we're, like we're recommending as part of this, we're recommending with the Piner South Plan and with the Regulating Plan. Because the Regulating Plan allows for that. If we were gonna do truly, just truly a Trotter Hills,
Sure.
we would ju, the, the only building type that we would allow in there would be building number two. Say, office, there'd be no retail, there'd be no mixed use, there'd be nothing else. I think as part of this comp plan, I think, I think it supports the comp plan recommendation of some mixed use. It doesn't go the full comp plan thing of trying to have a, this, this nebulous innovation hub and district down here. But allow us for, it would allow for, we talked about, we talked about a golf industry cluster. This would be a good spot for, for potentially a golf industry cluster. But it doesn't have to be just golf industry, it could be other things.
All, all the things that we're talking about that we, that we think would be a great spot for that hotel would disrupt. And I don't think that we're gonna end up talking about one hotel. I think we'd end up talking about two or three hotels together because typically it's one group or one ownership coming in as a developer and doing a couple brands together. But they're together on a campus. So I think that's what we have to consider as a village.
I kinda see it being supportive of the environment that's up there on the east side of highway five. Because if you do have, you know, people working there and businesses kind of setting up shop, if the, the closer you can be there, or even host meetings, the less you have to travel. And then if there's, you know, food options available for, for people up there, it could be another area of commerce overall.
Well, that's why I don't want to just stand up here and say, no hotels. I think we have to have a discussion as a board. I think we need to consider the pros and cons. In a lot of ways in my mind, I'm also thinking, you know, provide an area for a hotel other than, than Village Place, which we've discussed, you know, in the past. So, you know, I do see both sides, but it's important for us as a board to have this conversation and not jump over it very quickly and move forward without the, you know, the, the conversation itself, so.
Here's, here's the other part, here's the other part of that, Jeremy. If we don't put a number nine over in that B area and, and, and something transpires and somebody comes in, you know, I'd like to put a hotel over here. Guess what, you can come in and request, request a conditional zoning. Or maybe when we get the PDO updated, it could be a planned development moving forward. So something like that. If they, if they don't meet what the code is, is there, we could, we could always consider it. That way, that way you really control, you control it tightly. You don't open up that whole assemblage. You wouldn't, if you put a nine here, you're potentially opening up this whole area for a potential hotel, which I'm not saying is good or bad. But we had thought this, we had thought along the frontage of highway five was probably the best place for, for it to locate. So that's why we chose it, chose it in this sector. But we can always, we can add nine now, or we can always consider it at some point in the future.
I think David's correct. I mean, I, hopefully, hopefully with the development of this area with a number of small businesses or, or other businesses in there, a hotel, maybe a chain of some sorts, I'm thinking, you know, like a courtyard or whatever, where people visiting that business, on business or having meetings, it just flat out makes sense on a long-term basis.
Right, I mean, not, not everyone who travels stays at a resort, you know?
When you're on business travel for a couple of nights. Exactly, you just want a, a reasonably close proximity place to stay.
Really had to bring up short-term rentals again, but...
Yeah, I think that, I think the need for lodging, temporary lodging is a necessity. I mean, especially as things grow. But do you, again, do you want your Hampton Inn, you know, which looks like every Hampton Inn in the country, running parallel 250 feet, four stories high, you know, parallel with NC five?
It will not.
When, when there's only, you know, one or two locations where you can cross the railroad tracks.
Well, if we put in the form-based zoning, then it won't look like every other Hampton Inn.
And then you're gonna get a retail place in here or one of your national places.
I mean, you're right, that's gonna, but they, they do, if they wanna be in the place, if they wanna be in a place hard enough, they, they have to respond and they have to, and you've seen, we've seen the way they've, Hilton Head, they've responded, and all these various resort communities, they've had a tone, they've had to meet a lot of the requirement, the local requirements from architectural standard.
They have similar, you know, no franchise architecture that we have in our PDO.
By the McDonald's in Biltmore Village.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, it's very nice.
Who would know it's a McDonald's, yeah.
So I think the, I think the idea is setting up that we, you know, we have, if we have a pretty good, the architectural standards that we have proposed are, I think are pretty good. They, they cover a lot of facets and only allowing for, you know, you have to have so much fenestration, you can't have too much fenestration. Hip roofs or mansard roofs and things like that. So I think, and then building has to be compartmentalized so it doesn't look like one massive building. So I think, I think we've done a relatively good job. That doesn't mean they can't ask, but you don't have to get...
Can you, can you just clarify something for me? Where is the open space marketplace, all that other stuff? What, where is that supposed to be?
That's up in here, that's right here. See this shade of a building here? So if you look to, this right here, let me see if I can zoom in.
And the green space, the large green space down here is just vacant land?
Vacant land.
So, so the marketplace is in, um...
Right here, it's right here. So it's right, here's the Boys and Girls Club right here. And here would be the, here would be that, kinda that area, that front area around it.
If it comes to fruition, I would think that maybe a hotel wouldn't mind being near that.
And they could on, 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 in this particular area, right here in B. It's all, it is, you're right. This is a walkable environment right now.
I mean, I think we should show that on the map if that's what we're proposing.
You recall a couple years ago, we had a development plan coming, come before us for this area. Did it, if you remember, just off talking, did it extend all the way to highway five? I'm sure we, or did it stop somewhere? And at one point, I know it stopped and was going to, for future development. But was that all the way to highway five?
All the way to the railroad.
All the way to the railroad?
It went all the way to the railroad, yeah.
It was the total balance of that Mahaly track.
So if you looked, that original plan that came in prior to us, prior to us, you know...
October of 2019.
October of 2019, actually met, would have met, it was a mixed-use development. The original plan was all residential.
Yeah.
We pushed back on that. And then they came back with an actual, and actually a mixed-use plan that would have kinda fit the mold in here. But they kinda moved away from that and did the Piner South cottages. But the original proposal would have worked with what the concepts that we're showing here.
Concepts we have. It was just on the doorsteps of this conversation at that point in time.
Yes, we weren't ready yet.
Yeah, we weren't quite ready yet to say...
We didn't know what we wanted yet, so we were, so we were just finishing up the comprehensive plan.
For me, I wanted to make sure that we stopped, I wanted to make sure that we had that discussion. I think it's a valuable discussion, provide some points from both sides, and then discuss the B and C together. I think we need to discuss Jack's point earlier about what to do with the open space, you know, just for that conversation before we move into C, D, and E.
I'm not sure what it belongs to right now, can you help me with that?
I think, no, this is, uh, this is pretty much all the Mahaly track. This, so this is a bound, this is the boundary line, kind of, I believe of that Mahaly track.
The lower boundary of C is that road you're pointing out there.
Mm-hmm, right here. This is lower, this is the lower boundary of technically C.
So this open space part, part of this, what does it belong to? Does it belong to C or does it belong to E?
Uh, I, I would say it probably belongs more to C based on, well, if you look at the existing zone...
We have to decide. I mean, we can't just leave, it can't be a vacant thing in the middle here.
I'm trying to get there. This is, this is actually, this is zoned OP right now. So this is zoned OP, so, and I think the preference is not, when you were as a group meeting, the preference was not to have any residential down here. Single-family residential or otherwise. So I think that the natural pattern would be to bring this, this, one, two, and three, and four into this area.
Yeah.
And become part of C, Charlie?
Yep.
Is that right?
Yep, correct.
There's no negativity at all in including it in C?
Okay, in that?
Yeah, but, okay.
And, and the other, the other thing that this has got going for it is the development, the, if, if and when this area developments, develops in, in the future, it's highly likely it's coming from the north to the south versus the south.
Sure.
So we'll probably be revisiting this stuff along our net in the future.
So C's a pretty big block.
It is, it is a very big block. You're talking through 27 to, 27 to 40 acres.
Got it, okay.
And as we move to D and E, never mind, I see the, I see the differences. I was gonna ask for the differences, but it looks like D is just north of that blue line there, right, or?
Is that lower supposed to be colored for E? Because the building height and the uses match.
Matches E.
We can easily assimilate those two again.
Say that again, Alex?
We, we can incorporate the area, the, the little, it's green, but it looks teal on this screen, is a, with the Piner South cottages development there to the east, there is a easement that's been platted.
Oh, this one, yes, this one, yeah.
Right through there, so the thought was, you know, that could gain access for those future residents to this area. So the northern part of that demarcation would be those type uses. We can, we can easily move the southern part of that into block E and shade it appropriately since they pretty well match, same building types and height, it's an easy thing.
I see what you're saying, yeah.
I mean, I would propose that we move that into E unless we, unless we wanna discuss any changes for that area. But otherwise, it makes a lot more sense for it to be in E, other than just the irregular look of the shape.
So the border of E will be, coming from Olivia, there's two roads up, whatever that road, undesignedated, unnamed road. And the yellow area up to the teal, which is the access easement that has been granted as a part of the cottages, is that correct?
Correct.
That's in the right place, we, pretty much on this?
Yes.
Okay.
I think, I, I think what you're looking, if you look at the pattern, sort of pull out...
It's because they all have the same six, seven, eight in building height characteristics.
I mean, if the question is, go, go to the, go, pull your, what, what we're matching up here from a use standpoint matches, matches the layout that's shown, even on the low, on the low scenario. So look on the low scenario, look on, look on, look on block F in the low scenario, and you can see how we have, we're showing non-residential, which could be mixed use by the way. We're showing not, two non-residential buildings that kind of are, are meant to orient to the west, towards that block C and E. And then below that, kind of that break where that, where that existing easement is, that's where we're showing where it should be, where the recommendation is for single-family, detached single-family.
All single-family designated areas, standalone.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, through here, through here, down into here, with the exception of this area in block D. So, you know, you're right, we could make this part of block.
Okay.
We could make this part of block E because the land uses are gonna match up. Yeah, that makes sense, it does make sense. All right, Alex, where are you gonna take us now?
F.
Someone, someone writing this down.
Thanks for the pass.
Next time you ask me, I'm gonna say K.
All right, block F, what are we showing in block F? We are showing, there's not a lot going on in this area. I think we wanted to, what are we showing, one or two? So we're showing mixed use or office. There's already an office, I think there's an accountant down there. We, we figured that office or some type of non, non-exclusive residential would probably be more appropriate in this particular area.
What's the deal with that weird triangle that comes in there? I mean, I, I guess that's the only reason why F is not B, because it's divided, but, and looking at the...
Well, we're more limiting land uses down there too, so we're not, so if you look at block B, it's one, two, three, and nine. And here we're looking at just simply one and, do it, no, we're saying one, two, and three.
One, two, three.
Never mind, I was looking at that building height, sorry. One, two, and three, so mixed use, office, and retail. So the only difference is, you're right, the only difference is the hotel. The hotel, but we could, we could theoretically combine those.
Yeah, I was thinking simplify if, unless there's a reason.
No, there's not a reason. I think that we're just showing where we're trying to anticipate and connect green space, but I think, I think it does make some sense if, 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 if the rest of the group here doesn't see an issue with it. So basically what you're saying is, just get, just combine these two blocks together.
What is currently there?
Uh, currently there, there's that accountant that's down there, right here, and I think it's right here is the accountant's building.
Let me ask a question. The final form of this document or the PDO changes, well, they show lines on a map that go through parcels, existing parcels, and say, this is associated with block this X and this is associated with block Y, even though it's, right now it's one parcel. Are we gonna draw that line through someone's parcel and designate it for different uses?
And we're try, we're, with Village Place, we've been trying to, we've been wrestling with that to try and figure out how we could get them aligned a little bit better. And it's easier in Village Place because we have all the roads in place. This is gonna be a little bit more difficult to do that. I've seen it done where they just threw the Regulating Plan on top and then they, then on the bottom, they just, they use the Regulating Plan to kind of govern the uses under that. So it's, it's going to be, it's not gonna be easy.
Yeah, I'm, I don't know how that's gonna work, I'll wait and see.
No, with the...
I trust you completely.
No, don't, don't trust, this is, this is a, this is gonna be a difficult one because all, because all these roads don't exist.
Don't exist, that's right.
So, but, but we, but we have land, we have parcels underneath them. We can, we can control, we control the building height, we can control the building type, and we can apply that, we can, we can, we can say where we want them to be, and then we can control the architectural standards. So we still always have that.
The paper roads, before you drive on them, do you foresee these being put in by the, the developer? Or is this public roads?
Are you proposing that we install those and put them in the capital budget?
I'm not proposing anything, I'm asking a question.
No, I think that, I think that, no, I think that's, that's typical, we don't build roads. Typically don't build roads, so...
So this is proposal for a developer?
Correct.
So this is, this is a very broad guideline.
It's a very important question because when we talk about the Monticello realignment potential, I mean, someone's got to, you know, eminent domain, take those, those parcels and build a road through them, a village road, you know, if, if in fact that happens.
Two separate issues. The Monticello one or ones that would, the Monticello realignment was initiated really based on the administration's, you know, desire to potentially be able to expand the footprint of, of the park over there. So that'd all be on us. So that, that's something that we've all already discussed and there's been no movement to do it at all because we all know that eminent domain and, and building a road's gonna be expensive. So on that particularly, because that's all benefiting us, that would, that would come to us. Down here, south of Blake Boulevard, that's all developing, that's all benefiting a potential developer. So the idea would...
We would tell a developer that according to our plan, there's a road that's supposed to go through this parcel in approximately this location.
Correct.
And you must build it according to village specs.
Correct.
And it's going to be, and then dedicate it to the village.
That is all, well, I mean, I guess it could be a, we could talk about private roads, but I don't think that would make sense being in the commercial area.
So there's a little bit between here and there is what it comes down to.
That's correct, we don't, yeah. But it would be, the idea in general is that the developer puts in there, just like in any subdivision. We're not putting in subdivision roads for anybody, so why would we? We're not putting in subdivision roads for anybody. So why would we, why would we install a, a, a public road to services development unless there's something, some major type of use that we wanted to support in that?
Yeah, but the difference is, a developer comes forward with a parcel and they tell us where they would like to put the roads. And sometimes we adjust it, sometimes we don't.
And he probably owns all the land.
Pardon me?
He probably owns all the land or has contracts to buy the land.
Right.
Contingent upon it.
Whereas this one, it says, no, here's where the roads are going to be. You know, this is almost one of those things with NC DOT laying out on a map where a road's going to be. I mean, I'm a little concerned about that.
It's not, it is not, it is, it is a recommendation, it is a recommendation where we would see, how we see the development coming together. It's not an official map. It's not a, it's not a paper road. It's simply a recommendation. There's nothing that says that this road has to go in like this.
The way I see it.
What this, what this says is that if you, if developer A comes in, which is going to probably come in from not knowing the area that well, they're going to come in and they're going to say, well, what are the village's plans for that area? They go, oh, they've, they've already thought through a lot of this. So they've, they've recommended that a road go here. Oh, that makes sense. That means if I come in potentially reflecting this development pattern, I'm going to get, you know, it's, it's an easier path to approval versus, you know, it'll be less resistance versus coming with some other radical plan that we haven't thought through.
It seems like the, the roads support the land use. I mean, the land use is what we're driving after in the, all the standards. So the roads are shown on there, but what we're communicating to developer is this is the land use and the function we want. And if the roads can better support that in a different way, then that's fine. But they're put on here really just to show, really to be boundaries, because obviously these boundaries don't exist any other way. So they're serving as boundaries between land use areas that show density and development.
Yeah, the, I guess the, the, the reason why I asked that question, I go back to what Jack has said several times. You know, ownership of the parcels, you know, does the road divide a parcel? You know, when you have someone who just won't sell their land because it got titled to the great-great-grandfather in 54, what are you going to do? You know, you're going to go ahead and make it a public road? You can't do eminent domain for private roads.
But you can do it for public roads.
Yeah, so, you know, again, I understand it's, this is more of a, a theory or a plan. You know, I just, I'm trying to, in my mind, look at realities as you go through this, just because you have so many different owners in there.
That is correct. I mean, well, there's, there's less owners in this, but I think there's only, there's that, there's not a lot of owners within this area. And the parcels are generally really large throughout this interior area until you get down to Libya, Arnett and that area. These are really relatively big parcels.
So, oh, I have a question.
Okay.
Seeing as we're on block F, and we have two agenda items for this evening, I am wondering what your Jeremy and Darren's vision is of, are we planning on exhausting this topic this evening and potentially not reaching the PDO amendments? Or are we here for a long time?
I was, I, I had an over and under in this conversation of 45 minutes. Alex had two hours, so.
We're, we're making a recommendation for what uses can be allowed. Again, the, the roads, there, I think they're points to consider, and they're, they're, you know, reflected for people to look at in the future if they want to. But this may or may not look anything like what the final project is. It's really going to be controlled by what's in the Form Based Code. But by suggesting, again, what's an optimal use, I think that's what we're trying to do. Whether it looks like this, who knows? But yeah, it's, it's the best recommendation that we, I think, can consider at this point.
We were trying to get through this rather expeditiously.
Well, it just seems like, it seems like perhaps we should have a, a timeline charted around this conversation or just check in and say, are we all here for four hours tonight?
I think the expectation initially probably could have been two hours, and, and I think 45 minutes was a little bit aggressive.
I'm very, I'm also.
Long enough to know this board a little bit. However, I think it's a fair question to say, hey, Darren, where are we with giving you enough feedback and enough information? Are we kind of on the correct path as we move forward with our thinking as a board? And as we hit each block, you know, and maybe not get stopped any further? Is that what where, where we're kind of at?
I mean, we.
So I think we're on B and F, and I think the last topic that, that I have understood that we kind of stopped on is whether we're going to merge those two or not. Make any changes to F. Is that correct?
That is correct. We, we, yeah, we're, we're potentially going to combine these, these two together into great one block. We can finish off the east side and potentially go off and, and talk about PDO amendments, and if we have time, we'll back.
There's only three, three blocks on the west side. I think, there's some bigger tick, ticket options we need to consider and think about.
Yeah.
You know, parcel lines and block boundaries, the streets, that's going to, we're not going to figure that out this evening. So we can just go through like we were running through blocks A through C, look at the building height, the building types, put a bow on it, move into the next agenda item.
Sure. I was just wanting to clarify our goals because we could be here a long time.
Sure. As we talked about every little nuance. But, but to Alex's point, building heights, usage, we can talk about combining, but I want to make sure we're on a correct path and.
You are.
Okay.
We're on a correct path.
So I think we'll, I think we're heading there is where I'm going.
Alex?
Did we, did we come to any resolution on F?
Yeah, we are going to combine F into, we're going to combine F and B together. So, because the only thing that would add is the hotel. I don't see a hotel locating down there, but if there's any, if there's any resistance to that, we'll just do that for now. We can always divide it later.
Adding a story to F?
Oh, yep, adding a story.
Adding a story.
That would, that would be the practical impact, would be adding a story to F.
The only impact, the only input I'll have on that, and I don't disagree with combining them, but I'll make the point of, once we kind of get into the boundary of Jackson Hamlet there, and we have neighboring residential, you know, communities, I think the blending and, and the consideration, you know, as we move forward in this, for that community is important. As we blend it.
Sure.
That is correct.
Do we want a three, do we want to bring three stories all the way to the edge there? And do we want to bring a hotel all the way there, even if it's unlikely, to the neighboring homes that are, that are even outside of where we're discussing today?
That's a good point.
It seems unwise to do so.
B, D, I mean, if, if we're looking at ones that already exist, the only difference is live work and you have, I mean, I'm just trying to reduce categories.
All right, so let's, let's put a pin in that one. We can come back and, and think about that for a little bit.
Yeah. What's next?
Fourth.
G?
Which way are we going, Alex?
G's looking for north.
So G was, is pretty much all village property, right? I mean, there's a well site that's over there, but. So G would be here, and what we're proposing, this is, this is part of the the track, you know, right off Monticello. The greenhouse, the PCC greenhouse is over here. So what, we're simply showing one to three stories and building type two office. That would be it.
Great. Darren's.
This is all, that. Yeah, G is Moore County. That's, that's the well site. Yeah, it's all the villages.
So that's all village property?
Correct. We thought it's probably the best place. Correct. I think we did the same thing as we moved to block H, following that same development pattern. So if the road, if the road never shifts, so, so say Monticello never gets relocated, we still have these, these existing lots that are sitting that are currently zoned, that are currently zoned OP. So we simply, what we said was building height one to three stories. Building type would be type two office, again, to, to match up with the office that we're showing over here. We thought it was a lower intensity use. It wouldn't make, it wouldn't really do, it wouldn't really create a, create a land use change adjacent to the existing retirement village here. So it doesn't really change the future, the, the future that's currently shown on a zone for that area right now.
I'm just curious as to why we're restricting that just G and H, just to office.
Well, I think the office with respect to this particular area, if, if Monticello doesn't get, Monticello doesn't get redeveloped, we, we have a bunch of vacant developable lots that are currently zoned OP. So we're, and OP is generally, for offices, is a less intense use of land. It's less noise, you know, things like that. And having that type of use maybe flooding up to the Quail Haven might be, that might be, could cause some issues.
I'm just, yeah, mixed use. I'm just, yeah, because I would, I would think that small restaurant here or there to support office might be viable, perhaps. A little bit of retail. Yeah, I know, but, but G is separated from A. I mean, just physically separated from A and N from H.
But it's walkable. This is a walkable area. Remember, it's, it's a walkable area.
These roads, as on this map.
And trips.
About 50 feet wide, and they're really not. On the schematic, I mean, it makes it look like that, maybe even 100.
These are not construction drawings, so.
Well.
They're, they're generally accurate. Generally. They're generally accurate.
I, I think some of the consideration is, to my point earlier, also of what's outside the boundary and what is outside of there and how to kind of blend it in. And I think that's, needs to have some consideration. I think this kind of matches it.
I think the, I think the other issue, Louis, really is along, along Monticello here. We didn't want to put in more high-intensity trip generating uses along there, given that this is already kind of a functioning as an arterial already. And offices, once again, are probably a little, a little bit less intense.
There are any sort of residential use there. Say, say the resort wanted to put some employee housing options on some land that they own. If they, even if they continue to own that into the future, could that be a, I don't want to limit it by user, but by opening that option to them potentially as a suggestion?
Where?
In G. Because that's land that the, or that, that Piners currently, or is that village that owns it?
The, this is the well site. This is Moore County well site.
And then right next to it.
This is, this is our property.
Yeah, so a village of, yeah, I mean, some sort of affordable housing option for.
Well, they certainly could come to us and request a, that would be one where you, I think that'd be one where you'd want to request a change. I don't think we, we envisioned housing in here, but, but if it got to the level where we actually needed it, that.
Well, when, and when I heard it, I was thinking resort versus town. Because if it was resort property, I think allowing that option on that piece would be helpful. Again, you don't want to allow it to everybody, but. Yeah.
Well, I mean, that would, that would be adding a building type 10 there, multiple family.
Yeah, and with it being village of Piners, I'd cancel that.
There's, there's other, there's other areas across the street where, when we get to it, are areas that we have a lot of multiple family. It's all zone multiple family. So I think we are trying to get a lot of that multiple family and confine it, not really confine it on the west side, but we also do a lot of mixed use in this area. So any other questions?
I still, I, I just really have a problem with that just being all of this. Because in my experience, you get a three-story office building, they want a little cafe, breakfast place. I mean, they don't want to go out in the winter and walk over. They just don't. I mean, a developer would like to put something in there, or maybe it's a little FedEx place.
I would say.
Nailbox place.
I would say if that is really the case, because if you open it up the other, if you open it up to allow for retail, then you'll open up the, the entire assemblage to have retail along this entire frontage. Versus the way you're talking, if, if a developer comes to us, developer A comes to us and say, I, I got this development that I want to come to, to you as a planned development. I'm going to have offices over here, but I'd like to have a coffee shop to service this area.
Separate, I'm saying like on the first floor. I'm not saying a separate building.
I was thinking first floor, but I, right now, I was thinking a separate building myself.
Carbination.
But you, but you would, but Louis, what you would set that up for is if you put, if you add that as, you'd have to, I don't know how I'd write that code, code provision, because if we added, it would be allowable on all those parcels. So you would allow some type of retail use on all those parcels, unless you controlled it by something like a percentage of a square footage, square footage of your development could be devoted to some type of business accessory service like, like a coffee shop or something like that. So we'd have, that would have to be some, we can write it, it can be written. It just would take some, it would take some thought to do that. I'm not saying it can't be done. But I, I want to hear the rest of the group's discussion on that.
I guess on G, excluding the well site, and H, I mean, G, obviously, the village owns that. So that would be the village developing their own property, which.
No, I mean, what would, well, if, if we put our own buildings on it, or we could potentially, or we could potentially market that out and get rid of it that way as well, we could sell it.
So I, I guess I'm seeing it like unlikely to be developed in that way. Like, most likely, if you, if you realign it from what you said before, you're thinking, you know, village use buildings. And if, if you acquire those lots from Quail Hollow down there, then to do the realignment, then it would probably be this, a similar thing.
We might can take care of block G pretty easily because it's outside of the small area plan boundary anyway.
That's true.
Well played.
Which brings us back to H.
Okay, H. So outstanding what Louis had been talking about having some, some potential retail in there, which I still think we can, we can deal with if we truly want to via.
Outside. I, I don't know if that would benefit it any. I, I think restricting it to office and even reducing the height to two stories on, on that strip since it's between, well, proposed roads, whether it goes that way and then behind with, what's that, Quail Haven there?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, you know, I don't know if there, if there would be any, it doesn't seem compatible or beneficial to that if, if we're considering, you know, existing landowners that we're leaving out of the plan altogether. Yeah, I, I think the, there's no reason for a three-story building there. And that's the only thing separating G from H.
Yeah. What's the general consensus on the group? Are, are you okay with lowering it to two stories there?
Yeah.
I don't disagree. I don't disagree. Okay. Solve that issue. How about, do we, then are we doing the same thing up here?
Mm-hmm. All right. We're going to ignore that block since it's outside of the boundary.
Or G altogether for our discussing is what you're saying? Okay, yeah, both, yeah.
All right, so we finished up on the east side, right? Are we done on the east side? Or did? No, we didn't do this area. Did we do this area? Did we?
We did.
We did block E?
Area to it.
I must have missed that.
All east side now. I, J, K.
Yeah, I.
All right. All right, Alex, you take over now. You're more concise than I am.
Ninety minutes in.
Lock Eye.
All right, Lock Eye, bounded by Highway five there on the east and proposed extension there of, from Trotter South. Building height, one to two stories, building types, mixed use, office, retail.
Really, there's not a lot of developable area in here. I think there's two lots in here, and I think we, we actually have a plan in for that, for that, so.
Some of that area is going to be taken up right away acquisition for that.
It will be, but the, and, and those, and those lot, and the importance of what we're doing here is those lots will probably have to go through some sort of redevelopment at some point in the, in the future because of the loss of it. So, you know, having, having a plan in place, having the setbacks, having the architectural standards in place is going to be important. But the one, two, and three, mixed use office or retail, I mean, it pretty much matches what's, what's in there right now.
That's what I was going to say. They match what's there, right? So it's pretty assumptive on these four, pretty.
It'll just be newer.
Yeah.
It'll just be newer and we'll control it.
Right. Is there a reason on J? What's the thought process as, as we look at J, the building height differences from I? What, where, where did we? What, where, where did we, where's our thinking for that? I mean, was there a reason? Is there a building in that area or part of the plan?
I think on the plan, if you look back to the smaller plans, we're showing, showing a relatively larger corner of G. We're showing some type of building that could be a three-story building, but, I mean, it could easily be a two. I think we were trying to, if you look at the east side of the road, maybe it's, maybe it's a miss on, maybe it's, maybe, maybe this should be three-story on, on Highway five in, in block I. I'm not sure. I mean, I think either, I think either/or works.
Hey, Jeremy, I mean, one and two stories seems plenty along that, that streetscape. It's very close to the road there. There isn't a lot of room there.
Yeah, they're me.
Unless they do the, the highway revision, you know, in five or so years, it's going to be really squeezed.
It is going to squeeze.
I think what's there now, I think there's a lot for sale in that area right today.
We have plans, we have plans in it for, right now, it's a one-story building, one-story strip mall looking building.
All right, so we already have a plan and, you know, coming to there for this.
Oh, is it? I was talking about, okay.
So there's nothing wrong with us making this, we're not disturbing really anything, but making this a two-story building height considering there's already plans for the area, so it's cohesive with everything else.
Carry I down.
So I and J are the same then, so just, right.
Yep.
David said just have I be that whole two sections.
There you go, less blocks.
You may want to consider adding a nine to that as well. You know, because now you, you don't have a railroad tracks that you have to contend with. You know, if you're looking for a space to put hotel, it may be more logical, just traffic flow ease to, you know, put a hotel over there.
Okay. One, two, three, nine, and then building height, move it up to three, yeah, for both of them.
You know, it just, you know, because when you start putting that on the other side of the railroad tracks and, and everything else, and again, you know, we already talked about the masking of your, you know, center, if you will.
Concern for me with the building height of three on that side is the topography as you go towards the lake. It's down pretty significantly.
Well, and that, that may, that may help a little bit for either under building parking or parking around that.
I'm, I'm just thinking of everything behind would just be dwarfed by whatever would be in.
Oh, okay.
But again.
Most certainly would be.
I just think that the, the entrance to the Village of Pinehurst on Route five shouldn't be a canyon of tall buildings. It just doesn't, from a streetscape point of view, it just doesn't seem to fit.
Go back also to my consideration for Jackson Hamlet as well on that conversation. For Jackson Hamlet, that conversation, for a three-story building height. I mean, again, I want to propose that we just, we move it down to, to I, or I'm sorry, J, to, to two stories and then combine it with I. Just for uniformity for that whole area.
You could add a nine there and it wouldn't preclude a three-story building.
But I, you know, again, you know, you could take the nine away from Bravo or from B and put it on the other side of the street. Now you've got all the traffic going over there.
I got you. So you're talking about removing it from B.
God forbid, huh?
You're on the road a lot, I can tell.
Two hundred and twenty days a year, yeah. Living these places.
I think that's.
Very sensitive to where the hotels are.
I think, I think the hotel, everything on the other side's of commercial use, so having the hotel situated there.
I agree with that point, Eric, that you make there.
All the residential options.
There is a lot of existing residential along Gaines on the south side, outside of the boundary, so you wouldn't have a buffer if you had a hotel there like you do on the other side, aside from your traffic point, which is not a bad point, but there is.
I like your point a lot. I just think in the consideration and the development side, that's possibly what happened in that other, across the street, it'd be more, it'd be a little easier to incorporate it.
All right, so what we're doing, were we doing, added a nine over there, or we weren't? We're going to, we're going to do, we're going to do building height one to two, one, two, and three as the building types. And then we can, we can question whether we want hotel over there. Because we're going to come back to this. We're going to come back to, we did Village Place three times, and we honed in on it each time, and we got it.
And for.
Isn't that where that ten acres have been sold for, or have been for sale for like twenty years? Is that where that's at?
I think so, it's, yes, yeah.
There you go, perfect.
Well, but I think they said there's already, it's already got a development.
I said, that's another property.
A different one, to the north.
Still for sale.
Or that's a little bit south of there, maybe, okay. If we want to move forward, I mean, do you want to just kind of parentheses nine and so that we come back and have the discussion?
Yep, no, it's just.
Print it in depth?
Just to move it.
Unless we just feel like we shouldn't, unless the whole board feels that we should not, or the majority of the board.
I feel like it's more compatible, just taking the, making I one big section there.
I agree with that.
All right. We can always come back. We'll make the adjustments. We can always come back and adjust it. All right, the last big block. Which one is this? K?
K.
Okay, K currently is all zone, pretty much all zone, multiple family, so.
So, talk to me about what two-story multifamily looks like. Can you give me an example of what type of construction you're envisioning?
Townhouses.
Well, townhouses is five, so what's ten?
You can have, I mean, two-story, a two-story apartment building is, that's not a common.
Do we have one around here? I mean, can you?
Yeah. There's one up on five.
Two stories. No, those are taller.
There's one up on five near Barrett, isn't there? I think that, that's a two-story apartment building.
But the one off of Rattlesnake as well. Rattlesnake and then, that's two-story, I believe.
Those old ones?
It could be, you know, it could look similar to a townhouse-style development, but not be a true townhome.
Mm-hmm.
Could be all single ownership.
Oh, could be apartments rather than a single family, rather than, what word am I looking for? You know what I mean?
I think.
I mean.
Be simple. Thank you.
One of the kickers for that area is there's already multifamily there.
Yes.
Is that correct? I mean, I think that's, that's one of the.
Multiple family, there's.
The reason for the use.
Right, but I'm wondering, what is, what is the height, what is the current height restriction?
Current height restriction will be thirty-five feet.
Yeah, so that's more like three stories.
That's correct. Three stories with probably a flat roof.
I would make K and everything to the bottom. Maybe two stories, because you also have the existing homes behind there, so you don't want to dwarf those. But then the central section there would be its own, that we can make that J and allow three stories there, since some of that already is anyways.
Rain slopes down, back there when you go back there. If you took everything that's on the far west side of K and made that three, it would probably fit in.
I'm thinking of viewing it from behind though, where the residents.
Oh, okay.
Where the current residential is.
So having that buffer of two stories, allowing three in the middle still, makes it a little less severe for, for them.
I mean, those two sections there, David, just north and east of that open space, right there.
Yeah, those two and then above.
This, and these are, and this, and what you're not seeing here is, this is what, Evan can. These are most of townhouse styles, I think, aren't they?
Some of them.
No, they're single-story, aren't they?
Already be allowed.
This would be the only area, so you're talking about this, this area, this is really.
To that and the two below it.
Yeah.
All of that be three stories. Um, yeah, and same use, and the only distinction between K to the left and below, same uses, but two stories.
Okay. Everybody's in agreement with that, that's fine. Is, is there a consensus?
But there is.
Not on the interior.
He's given a buffer to the existing, what, what's being proposed.
Right now, thirty-five feet's already allowed.
It's already allowed.
Part of the property is, as I'm understanding.
I would like us to possibly consider it just for the, if we want to go three stories to where the five, six, seven, eight, and ten is, and then maybe the, the little cross street, little square above it, the two slices of the two long skinny ones already have so much development already in it that if, and if you dropped three in there, it could be some differences.
I mean, my main.
If we want to, as a board.
I mean, my main consideration is wanting to make sure that we have something in here that is creating truly affordable housing. And the existing zoning allows for three-story multifamily. And I, I just wonder if it's really in the spirit of what we want to do to eliminate affordable housing stock in this part of town.
You know, I kind of agree, but I, I think when we talk about the term affordable housing, certainly when we talk about multifamily, that kind of brings in a different definition of, of market, multifamily versus, you know, affordable housing, multifamily. Two different things, kind of in that development structure. And so are you trying to say, hey, we need actual defined.
I'm not, I'm not saying that we need legally defined affordable housing. I think that Pinehurst needs to have housing stock where students can afford to live and where elderly folks who can no longer remain in their single-family homes can afford to live. I'm not saying affordable housing stock by a legal definition of affordable subsidized housing. I'm saying housing that teachers and firemen and.
Multifamily would provide.
Multifamily situations, single moms can afford to live in.
Okay.
So.
Young military, what have you.
But if we say three-story with the current building height restriction, then to Alex's earlier point, that would be a three-story flat roof building, because we're not going to get what we, what we have there now, which is a two-story slope roof, which we could, by saying two stories, we could still allow, or would that restrict that?
Two stories shouldn't be a problem.
You know, some of the thought process is, do we want to push in more units to that area or, or limit it? If we're going to discuss the multifamily side of it, if it's to push in more units than, than three, but then.
Six D use per acre.
Yep, and then three, thirty-five feet high, flat roof.
I mean, the, the other restriction, the, the, two other restrictions that greatly impact that is the amount of D use per acre, which is six.
Mm-hmm.
And the minimum unit size, which is, makes developing some of those things un-economical. So that, those are the two things that you also have to look at as part of this, but three-story, I mean.
So I guess, Jules, my, my thought, where I was getting to, is I, I don't know that saying two-story necessarily restricts from three, because it, because you do have, there's a, there's a two-story, is it apartments there at the back now, or what that is?
Yes.
There's some apartments in there.
With the regular roof and it, it meets the thirty-five, so if you, that, that could continue to develop around there versus we would have to, it would also have to be a change to the ordinance to add a third living story. So that might be beyond the scope of this.
Probably is. I'm, I'm just saying, we, it's, if, we, we need, we need to think about maintaining a diversity of housing stock in Pinehurst, and if not here, where?
But really, the only thing that affects it is the third story, right? Whether we have a third story, because, I mean, one and two family, I mean, you can do two stories anywhere out throughout here and not have any problems. The one, you're already going, the governor, the major governor that you have then is the, the amount of units that you have per acre. You should be able, these, these parcels are large enough, large and undeveloped enough that you can put enough units in there, but, that you could put more units in there, but you're governed by that six D use per acre. So anybody coming in is going to probably need to do, like, starting out, is going to need to do a conditional zone change and have us, you know, be accepting of what you want to do and negotiate the form-based code and negotiate all these, all these restrictions with them if we don't ever get, you know, the form-based code passed on this.
Yeah, no, I mean, I'll defer to the group. I just think it's something we need to pay attention to.
All right. So we good? We good for now? We can, we can move on? I think we've spent.
Yeah, is that, that's the final block, right? Is there anything else that you need us to, to discuss on this plan tonight?
I don't think so. Alex?
That's, that's a good to go, okay. Then with that, unless there's any thought process, we'll move on to the second agenda item on our agenda tonight, which is discuss upcoming amendments to the Pinehurst Development Ordinance. And again, this agenda item will be discussed in work session format and no action will be taken by our board tonight, so.
Shannon, I need help.
With that, who's going to introduce this one to us?
Shannon? She's, she's very, she's busy. Huh? I can't get to it.
Unless someone tells we need to break.
Shannon, can you pull this up, please, for me? All right, tonight we're going to talk about, hold on the proposed amendment, please. All right, so as part of the short-term rental, short-term rental discussions, which I'm sure you all remember.
And you're refreshes.
No. No.
Where are we talking about? Home stays?
Uh, we'll talk, we're going to get to home stays, but tonight, as part of the process, you know, there, there was a model that was, that was kind of discussed as we were going forward about an existing model that works within one of the private communities. So, and, and there were some questions raised, well, can we, can we work on and potentially develop, you know, a model based on what's going on out there, because we don't ever hear any problems out within, and the model we're talking about right now is what, is how CCNC is modeled, where everything runs through a master association and, and pretty much the, the executive board out there. So they control all the rentals out there. Everything from the program goes through them. They can take, they can, as far as I know, based on my reading of the, based on my reading of their covenants and restrictions, they can pull that back. So they, they have ultimate control over all of these types of uses within the boundaries of CCNC. And as you're, as you buy into these areas, you buy, you buy into them with the knowledge that these things, these types of neighborhood, these types of short-term rentals, that's what they are, can occur within, within that neighborhood. So based on that, based on that model that was working, we, we sat down and we kind of came up with, with a model that, you know, we think can work if we make some, if we make some adjustments to the, to the PDO. And that's what we're here to talk about tonight is, you know, rather than, you notice that it's not in a public hearing, so we didn't, we didn't create this and throw a public hearing out there.
Thank you.
We're, we're having a discussion on this tonight, so we can, so we, we want to get to that point. We do want to get to that point. Council wants to get that, get to that point. But we thought we'd start with this in work session, so you can, so you can, I want you to tear it apart and tell me what, you know, tell me what, what, what is the potential issue as we read through, as we read through these, we read through these proposals, because we want some guidance. We want to do something like this. We want to propose something like this. And this is kind of a start to some of those adjustments that we might, might want to make regarding short-term rentals. But this is, this is one of our, one of, one of the starting points, so.
It seems kind of counterintuitive at, at first glance, because one of the arguments against short-term rentals in, in residential areas, period, is because they're harmful, this, that, the other. But then it's creating a, it's, you know, because these, these places want them, because they're beneficial to their, their community and culture and whatever else, we're, we're making it reasonable there, but not elsewhere. So it's, are they bad or are they good?
Well, it depends on the, I mean, if, if you're moving into development where it's known that, that is, that is, you know, that is a, like, I live in a condo association, right, so I live in a condo. I know that, that, I moved into that area knowing that that, that was a, a potential land use occurring within my, you know, right next to me. People moving into just a, maybe moving into anywhere in this community, you know, they're, I don't think they moved in with the expectation that there might be an STR next to them. But if we set up a, but similarly, if you go into CCNC, you move into there with a model knowing that, that, that you could have one of those type of houses next to you, but it's, but it's controlled through, through their master association. So I think what we're proposing that, is that if you come in with a development, let's say you come in with a subdivision development of twenty acres and twenty lots, and that's just your subdivision, that's your isolated subdivision, or your isolated condo development, and at, at the front, as part of your declaration, you have an association, you have all those things that on the front end, when you develop it, it's going to be, it's going, you don't have to have it, but it would be allowed. So I think that's the thought. The thought is, this is, this is something that would be created, that you, anybody who would be moving into it, they wouldn't move it into it without the knowledge that this is something that could occur. There was no expectations that this wouldn't be occurring, occurring, you know, next to them. So, so I think that's, that's what different, differentiates it from everywhere else in the community.
So, I understand the creation of new, but is what this is also doing, providing protection for homeowner associations like, or masters agreements like CCNC and others that want to allow short-term rentals now? that want to allow short-term rentals now that already exist?
That's, that's, that's what this would do. Correct. That's what this would do.
So this opens the door for any homeowners' association that meets these requirements to change declarations such that it can then allow short-term rentals within its-
Potentially.
-boundary. That includes all the condominium associations, and there's many, many-
Potentially, yes.
...within Pinehurst.
Yes, but it would require, it would require a change for them to-
In the declarations, right. Usually, not normally, a two-thirds vote, I would suspect, in most cases.
Correct, so you give some self-governance.
Wouldn't be unusual to have two-thirds of the owners in a condominium association, maybe one of the smaller ones, decide that they want to become part of the short-term rental program.
Correct.
And therefore, they change their declarations to allow it, and of course, then it has to be managed through their association.
Correct.
Is that the way that would work?
That is correct.
If you have an area zone condo, you already have permission to do-
You do not.
Right?
Now, the way that works is that you've allowed it in almost every, allowed it in almost every district there is.
That's what, that's-
Whereas if you were trying to restrict it to just a selected one or two gated communities, you would not have the XSR in every single zoning district. You would restrict it to maybe 210 and R30.
R10.
And leave out something like-
R10 is also in there, I believe.
Yeah, I think they have R10, you know, R10, R30, and 210. But if you only had those, that would clearly make it very difficult for an association that's not in those zoning districts to implement this. Is that correct?
For those areas that are not zoned that.
Right.
I'm not, we weren't, we weren't trying to do a specific carve-out for a specific area, because, you know, that specific area has the same zoning, part of the same zoning that's in other areas of the, of the community. So we're coming up with, with a potential that could, a potential model that could be used in other of the same generals, general zoned areas versus just a private community.
So this is a way for an association to, to bypass the, the intent of the village, which was to restrict the number of short-term rentals going forward.
Then we shouldn't have this conversation, you're right, then we shouldn't have this conversation going forward, but this was something that we were, that we, we had discussions about during, during that process.
Right, accommodating a particular, unique situation.
A particular, unique situation with, with a general use zoning that, that matches all the other general use zonings in, in the community.
It's not unheard of for the village to delegate certain authorities to community, you know, these type of communities, based on agreements, to let Pinewild have jurisdiction-
But then you're, you're giving property rights to other residents that you're not giving to others. But if you live in an HOA, you're already-
In like your HOA, move to a different HOA.
Right.
But the, you know, the ordinance is for everyone who lives in Pinehurst, then if you're calling, if you're calling the amendment X and the reason is X, but the effect is actually Y, and that's really the only effect that you're getting to, it doesn't matter what you call it on the front end. People are going to see the effect as to benefit specific properties at the, at the, you know, while you're leaving other ones out. So I see that as problematic.
I want to mention one of the-
So you can see that, so you understand the approach that we're trying to take with this, is to set it up to allow this, this could occur in other areas of the community, not just the Y area of the community.
It could, but what's the likelihood of 20 neighbors to get together and incorporate on Gun Club Drive?
But they could. The condo associations could, and so this could occur.
They're going to start paying for the roads?
For the most part, it's so prohibitive for that to happen, it's, it's like, why does the option exist? It's a loser-y.
I want to point out also, one of the things that could happen, could be pretty dangerous in this scenario, whenever we give the HOA the opportunity to have the two-thirds vote type of thing. I mean, we have communities today which have large ownership structures inside of them who still own the majority of the land inside the community. And so whenever a HOA vote comes to play, they actually, by default, make the decision because they still own the majority of the property.
Declarent as, as the, still controls the declarations.
So that, that subject would then minimize those who then actually have a house and live in the HOA. Also, through the development process, when the HOA is created, initially, it's not unheard of for the majority of the land to be, still be owned by the developer at that point in time. So then could vote for his own wishings to create whatever he wanted for that area after development. And I, if I recall, we've been pretty supportive of creating the HOAs through the last few years of some of the developments that's come before us, and actually asked, in a way, you know, because, for that. So I, I wanted to make sure that I mentioned that, that they're, we're creating the possibility of some loopholes that could endanger the people who actually live in the community.
Live in that particular community, that they bought into that particular subdivision development, that particular condo, condominium development.
Either one group owns the majority of the voting rights today in an HOA, or it's early in the development stage to where the developer still owns the majority, could ultimately vote, could vote for himself again. So just throwing it out there.
Do developers typically vote in HOA settings that don't own, that don't reside in those communities? I mean, do they show up at HOA meetings and vote, or is that?
Most of them are by proxy.
I don't know, yeah.
Depends on what the declaration says, but you're still, you're still, think about places that don't have HOAs that could previously operate as a short-term rental. Now, you're, you're treating people arguably similarly situated differently.
Point.
Because even though, yes, they could go through the process of getting themselves and, and 20 neighbors together in a contiguous figure and incorporating and collecting dues for whatever they consider common area, they could check every box, but the likelihood of that happening is so unlikely.
If you've ever tried to organize an HOA vote, you know what you're talking about, right?
You know, even though they can, because it's so burdensome, it's pretty, it might as well be an impossibility.
Well, they have to be a planned community neighborhood, according to the definition for that, for this to take effect.
Which we haven't got to yet, but yes.
Twenty neighbors could get together and create this.
Hey, guys, I want to-
Bucks from the, from the start.
Go ahead and turn your microphone on, Sonya. I want to make sure that she's been trying to say something for a little bit.
I've got the same problem. Okay. Who brought this up? Where did this come from? Have I missed, have I been gone for six months?
Those were discussions that occurred during the development of short-term rental ordinance.
Because nobody seems to know. I've asked Paul and I've asked Jules, and we are kind of like in the dark here.
There were concerns that were raised, and we're following through some of the concerns that were raised and given some, we thought we got direction from.
Concerns were raised by?
Parties.
Pardon me?
Various parties. I can't name all of them.
If, if an HOA that is, you know, let's have a large development, wishes to use short-term rentals as a marketing and/or convenience to its members, this is the vehicle they could potentially use. Is that the idea?
That's correct. That's the, that's the, that's the concept behind it.
The concept being, or at least the basis for this concept was that an HOA would may want to allow owners of houses within the development to put their houses in a pool such that prospective members who want to buy into the community in one form or another can come and experience it. And these people may be out of town for six months, three months, or whatever, and so it's not to harm for them to, to put it in the pool. So that, I think, is the genesis of this. Some HOAs ask that this provision be thought through, and whether or not we could incorporate it. Is that kind of fair?
You said it very well, Jack.
But why is it allowed in an HOA and not, not elsewhere?
Well, here, here's my question for staff, and this might be a research thing, is what other authority, responsibility, or HOAs are given that, I mean, normally, it's, it's prohibiting something, but what, are there other instances of things where things are permitted?
It's typically more restrictive.
Yeah, you're saying more restrictive, but not less than the other.
So is there, is there, yeah, other, other things in the similar vein that would show that this is reasonable?
Yeah, it was very common for an HOA to have more restrictive covenants than, than allowed by a PDO. In fact, you know, Pinewild's a great example. I mean, as far as setbacks and, and building size and so forth and so on, architectural review of every single thing you could possibly imagine, so.
But except, you know, if you look at, I've read the CCNC, they, they allow for, you know, which would potentially run contrary to some of our zoning provisions, but they do allow for limited business usage in there for some, some prop, there, there's some, some of the bylaws, I believe, allow for some type of limited offices, things like that, within their, within, within the subdivision at the control of the association and the Board of Directors. It's, it's up to the Board of Directors in that case. Now, where that would run contrary and restrictive against the Board, against the Village of Pinehurst, we wouldn't allow it. So it would be, it might be a tough thing for them to do, but it's, it's in their basic, it's in their documents, and that might have been their documents when they created it in 1963.
So in your, in your opinion, the way this is structured today, first of all, it looks like the definitions are very much based on the North Carolina-
Planned community act.
Definitions, you know, like planned community neighborhood and so forth.
Yes, it is. That was what, I took a lot of this.
You took it right from the NC.
I've adjusted, I've made some modifications, yes.
Slight, very slight. The only new one is the neighborhood housing accommodation. That's, that's unique to this effort, is that correct?
That is correct. That is correct. So if you're in a planned community, if you were in a planned community neighborhood, based on what that definition is, you're run by a master association, based on what this particular definition is, that would set up to allow for the neighborhood housing accommodation, which is, which is a type of, it almost matches our STR definition.
Darren, do we have an idea, just a rough guess, of how many people live in an HOA community inside Pinehurst versus do not? Have we, have we looked at that at all, just total, not yet?
I have no clue. I, if you look at all the condo associations, you could take all the condo associations and go, how?
And the condos. Well, and that leads me to kind of my point, maybe it'll help answer, you know, some of her questions. You know, I think that, you know, I don't think no one here wants to declare this kind of, you know, directed towards a CC and C, you know, concerns that they had during this process. And I think that, I see the danger of calling this any sort of a CC and C-type bill. We, we use them as examples coming forward, because I think that we, as a board, need to make sure that we are inclusive of all the, you know, the concerns of the HOA communities that are important to Pinehurst today, because there's, there are a lot, there's more. And to your point, there's condo associations, there's, you know, you know, of course, we have the golf course communities and that type of thing. And so an ordinance that is representative and that we consider all the unforeseen issues as we move forward with an ordinance, I think is important. So I appreciate this process, because we're not writing this whole ordinance and then coming and dropping on us, and then we're like, wait, hang on a second.
That's why we're in this format.
What's that?
That's why we're in this format.
Yeah, yeah, I very much appreciate that. So we're bringing some of these concerns forward now that I think we would at that process. And I just, I just want to make sure that, as a board, that I would adjust to, one, not label this towards one community, make sure that we're inclusive of all the community, all the HOA communities that are a part of Pinehurst, because it is a large percentage, I would imagine. It's not like it's, you know, just one in our community, and-
Any community with an organized HOA that, that collects dues, which is not every resident. So it doesn't matter if it's CCNC, if it's Aaron Hills Condos, if those residents have different fundamental property rights as other residents, that, that's problematic, because you can, you can cut through every, everything on this page. You know, you're calling it a neighborhood housing accommodation because you have X, Y, and Z, but it's a short-term rental. So why, why, why can't I, as a, as a landowner in a residential R20 zone, not do this, but these people can, simply because they have an HOA? I'm being treated differently and not, not, you know, given the same rights as my neighbors.
Well, because you bought into the HOA declarations, they were part of your deed, and you reviewed those carefully when you bought the property and said-
But that wasn't me.
But I, I bought my house, you know, and just, just by virtue of never using it as a short-term rental, I'm not, not allowed to now.
I'm, I'm a little confused.
So if I bought my house, not in an HOA, with, with the intention that one day I might use it as a short-term rental, but I haven't in the last year.
Well, that, that argument is kind of-
That's a different, it is a different point.
I think they settled that in October.
Yeah, we've, we've jumped past that one.
I don't think we need to go through there again. Let me, let me ask a question about wording. I've read this, I understand where you're coming from on this here. The, the neighborhood housing accommodation definition, which is really critical to this, this whole thing. Let me ask you, does it, does it add or subtract, or does it enhance it in any way to say that it's a whole-house dwelling occupancy where a dwelling unit located within a planned community neighborhood, the occupancy of which is managed? So I'm kind of being redundant, in a way, but I'm emphasizing that the association is managing the occupancy and not anything else related to the property necessarily.
Clarifying.
Or may, maybe even specify the temporary occupancy. In other words, really make sure you realize that it's, the association, there's a lot of associations that quote, manage a lot to do with your property if you're in an HOA. I mean, they tell you what you can and can't do, how many trees you can take out, you know, and what you're, and so forth. So they, in a way, they manage your property to some marginal extent, but they don't manage the occupancy. So that's why I wanted to kind of be redundant, if, if that makes sense. You tell me.
That, I mean, we can further, that, that's not going to make things, it's, it's not going to confuse it.
It doesn't change it, to my knowledge.
Yeah, it's not, it's not going to confuse a reader on it, I don't think. I, I understand it, so I'm not that bright.
It's just overemphasis, maybe, I don't know.
No, it's fine. I'm, I'm still trying to get you, I'm still trying to get at this concept. Now, I know there's going to be people on here-
I'm into the content, I think I'm into the content.
Who aren't going to, who aren't going to agree with it. I understand it, that's fine. We went through this process last time, you all didn't understand, you all didn't agree on it last time. I'm not sure I'm going to get it on, I'm, I'm not sure we're going to get it on this time around. But I wanted to go through the process, a critical process of looking at, raise the issues, like you are, like you have been doing, raise them, so, so we know, as we go through this process, what's some of those other issues that are out there. And it doesn't mean that we can't make changes, again, going forward, based on some of this conversation. We're here, we're here today because we had some of these discussions during the STR development process. We're not done yet, we still have to do home stays, we still haven't, we haven't, we haven't circled back to this. This is, this is a point that we're circling back to. We can always continue to refine and circle back. This is what's before us right now.
Did you, or your definition of planned community neighborhood, we, you have 20 acres and 20 units. Is that straight out of the North Carolina?
Nope, that's just the, that's the number I picked out of the-
So you could, if you wanted to, you could pick a larger number.
That's correct.
Such as 100.
You could.
I mean, that would seem to tie it down pretty closely to a very select few who would, may wish to be able to implement this.
Ah.
Or you would see where I'm, I'm coming from.
And I was trying to be more expansive. I was trying, when we were developing this, I was not trying to be so selective that, that it's-
I mean, at some point, it's almost like a bill of attainder here.
Now, for the, for the private communities, there are the planned community neighborhoods, or those neighborhoods that are, you know, regulated by the North Carolina Plan Community Act. Of the five places that I spoke with, there was only one that had an exception, and they were vocal, you know, during the STR discussion. Now, if they already have permits for places that are already short-term rentals, then no one's taking anything away from them. They still have the ability to utilize those under their very restrictive approval process of the individuals using those, right?
One of the-
So they didn't lose anything?
That is incorrect.
They didn't lose anything? Okay.
No. But if they want to expand the program within, within the development, that's where it's going to-
We're going to have several hotels on Highway 5 for people to stay.
That's right. Move on.
Darren, I, you know, from a verbiage standpoint, I mean, I- Darren, you know, from a verbiage standpoint, I mean, I, you know, some of our, some of our more real estate attorney-type can weigh in heavier than I can. However, I, I like the direction of this. I would like us to see us to really just solve some of that concern, to see a developer kind of pull the flip, you know, on, on the people that have already purchased, you know, into the development they've decided. Some of those, you know, you know, pitfalls, some of those type of things that, that we can bring up. But otherwise, I, I think it's, you know, directionally correct for our community. My other question, really along with that, is are we, is there any movement from maybe a state legislator's standpoint to help us define this even further? I mean, at this point in time, there's just, there's no, currently, that we expect to have happen within the next year, I would probably say two years.
Not that I'm aware of.
Or that you're aware of. Okay. So we're still kind of left at our own, at our own devices and our own definitions of this type of thing.
That would be correct.
The point E under 1 under 10, installation of a landscape screen.
Well, and we didn't talk, that's another thing that we did not talk about, because we haven't got to that point. We proposed a whole RSR, I think that could, and I think what the thought behind that was, if we would allow for something like a planned community, a planned community neighborhood to develop, and it was adjacent to an existing residential development, that might, you know, might not want to see that, might not want to have that STRs adjacent to them along that common property line, that the requirement would be that you install a landscape screen along that side of the property.
Like commercial screening?
Yes.
For commercial buildings?
Could be, it still is yet to be determined, but it could be, it could be opaque, it could be commercial. So it could be a heavy screen. It could be a 20-foot landfoot buff, landscape buffer. So we were just saying, let's get it, because we've heard things about noise, about all the other things about that, that come with STRs and having a, we have a landscape buffer requirement for some of those purposes to mitigate that, so let's require that along that common property line between that development and the planned community neighborhood.
Can I ask a dumb question?
Oh, it's not dumb.
Okay. I'm builder X, and I see the land, 20 acres. I'm going to build there, and I might have a neighborhood. But basically, you're given a free ride to a builder to come in and circle, go around what we've just all tried to do and do this.
If they meet the requirements of the ordinance.
That's my point.
Well, I think that was one of the discussions of my point earlier, that I think that at least warrants more discussion as we move forward, because today all we're asked to do is give input on where we are. We don't have to start all over and discuss the whole, you know, short-term rental thing, you know, at this point, so.
They, they could, they could, and they could accomplish a similar thing with the zone change as well. That can occur as well.
So.
You couldn't, to, to get to the, to the point there, is that you could, in fact, have an existing association as of this date that meets this requirements, as of the date of this ordinance?
You could.
Which would eliminate the issue about, you know, a new, a new development could, in fact, incorporate.
Well, it's not a new development, it's new residences within that existing development. So you're, in turn, adding the possibility of creating more short-term rentals.
There could be an effective date. I mean, you could add an effective date if you want to, to this as well. So we're going to apply to new development, but I don't, I wouldn't see why it would be a bad thing to apply to new development if it's controlled within.
Well, if you're trying to grant this ability to existing HOAs, which this does, I mean, of course, changing the declarations, as we know, is not a trivial task, but you're granting this potential to existing HOAs within the village of Pinehurst, do you want to grant it to potential future HOAs?
That's a question.
And to get to your point, maybe not.
You're going to cause a more headache than anything else.
Exactly.
When you have to. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's just going to.
How much should we consider the likelihood that if we, say we were all agreeing with this, and it's when we get to that point after discussion?
I don't think that's going to happen, but yes.
Right, but how, I mean, how much do we consider what we think this is going to do when we recommend it to council? Because we've already sent one recommendation. I mean, this does seem a little bit like it didn't get qualified in the initial ordinance.
We didn't include it in the first recommendation for.
Right, because our recommendation was to allow. So how much is our responsibility to try to come up with something here that we think they would consider reasonable and approve? I don't know what that looks like, honestly. This will come back to us.
It would, the chain would be, I would, I would start here, I would go back to, depending on if I get some general consensus, all right, general, not full buy into it, but if I get some general consensus to this, then I would go to council, talk to council. Council, do you, do you like the direction this is going in? Is there any tweaks that you want to go, based on some of the conversations that we're having today, which I'm sure everybody's watching, and then come back with another, with another proposal that I can, that can result in, in some PDO amendments being offered.
I think it's an interesting concept, that if, if, in fact, the ownership of units within an HOA wished to engage in this type of activity, that we're granting them the ability, the potential ability to do that, if they can pull it off within their own HOA. I'm just concerned about going forward, whether or not it makes sense to grant this for all futures, because of the issue you were about, that the declarant may, in fact, you know, decide, well, I just, I'll put this in here, you know, for whatever reason.
I don't want just.
I mean, it's, it's a nice, it's a nice feature, in a way, that grants potential property, property rights to owners of property within an HOA to go this direction, if the majority, the two-thirds majority of the, of the ownership wishes to go there. I mean, that's, that's what it allows.
Don't want to bring up any specific situations, but we just approved a development in Pinehurst, which today had some previous homeownership involved for some long term. And is that something, would this push us through that development if still the majority of the lots? Except for, I remember I, if they created their HOA, yeah, they created their HOA.
Which, oh, you're talking about Pinehurst South?
Holly Crest.
Oh, Holly Crest.
And then at that turn, would they be eligible, if this ordinance went through, would they be eligible, at that point in time, the developer himself, to vote this in, inside of their HOA?
But, yeah.
Probably want to change, you know, and I hate to use him as an example, call him out, but that's a great example, because you have some long-term residents there, and.
Wouldn't be able to participate.
And that's the only concern I've got with this, the developer himself, being a voting member of his own HOA he's created.
As I recall, the existing property owners were not going to be part of the HOA.
That's correct.
No, they were not. They were going to be excluded from the HOA.
Yeah, right, yeah, yeah.
The one thing that doesn't seem to be strong enough here is talking to the fact that it's the master association that's actually doing the management and, and implementing, implementing short-term rentals. In other words, they're managing every aspect of it. That doesn't seem strong enough to me.
And then I, I come back to, we, there, there was so much concern about the safety of the short-term rentals and making sure that they had, you know, fire detectors, that they had fire extinguishers. But here, we're like, hey, HOA, you got it, you know? No, no, they have to comply with all of our requirements?
Yes, yes.
Are you going to hire someone?
That's not, that's not very clear.
Well, if you go down to SR10, we haven't gotten to SR10.
All right.
So SR10, neighborhood housing accommodation. After the effective date of this ordinance, all neighborhood, all neighborhood housing accommodations shall be required to obtain a development permit from the village. All NHAs, whether lawful use or newly established, and I pulled that from the others, I might have to work on that one, shall comply with the following standards. Compliance with SR9 standards 1A through K.
Okay.
Which is all that stuff that you were just referring to. Submission of documentation and contact information about it being located in neighborhood housing association. Submission of documentation of master association rules and regulations pertaining to that. Submission of documentation that the neighborhood housing, housing accommodation has been authorized by the master association, which gets back to the JEX. Is that powerful enough? And then, lastly, the landscape screen. So it does get at that. So it, it requires that you have a development permit, so you're going to have to come in and apply for a development permit. If you violate the, if you violate that permit, and we have, you know, we built in that, that whole revocation section to revoke development permits as well, so that comes into play as well. So it's not just a, it's not just a carte blanche, do what you want. There's still rules in place that you have to follow. You have to get a permit, and we can, what we give, we can take away in this instance. We can't take away the previous ones that were, were developed years before, before the adoption date of the ordinance, because a permit wasn't required, but a permit's required now. We can take that away.
Do you mind if we continue this discussion? Because we have board of adjustment work to do, and I have a, I have a wife who is needing me home. I'll be in trouble otherwise.
Yeah, you know, I think, I think that where we are at this point in time is to make sure that we give some input back. And really, I want to defer that to Darren. Is this enough input and direction at this point in time? Because I, I, the point I'll make on that is that, at some point in time, as a board, if we kind of get into just redundancy, and if we get into kind of nuances, then we do need to end it. Darren, where are you in this?
I think we need to come back, because I don't think we're done, and I understand where Jeremy is, and we're sitting at, we're sitting at.
Yeah, we can do a quick work session, because you, you want to get this to a public hearing eventually.
I do want to get this to a public hearing, and time is running short.
Then maybe 15 more minutes from us. Is that right? Okay, before we, yeah. Okay.
We can come.
We have to do the board of adjustments.
I want to, I want to do two, we can go back, we can meet in two weeks. If we can meet in two weeks again, because I wanted to have a meeting and talk about Village Place and about some Pinehurst South, but we can add this, and we can add this into the, onto the agenda as well. I would just like to get another meeting before.
Yeah, I, I won't be here in two weeks.
Well, let's.
We're not voting, we would still be making no action. This would just be more.
Correct.
But you can accept written comments?
Sure, sure. No, I'm not going to be able, yeah, I'm not going to be able to coalesce that all into one thing, because I know there's going to be comments coming from different directions on this thing.
I think, you know, based on the conversation today, I think we can all, we better, know better what we're talking about.
Yep.
Okay.
We can maybe provide more written recommendations.
I really want to have another meeting for the end of the month, before we meet again, if we can meet.
I do think that's a good point. I think we can go home, get some thought on this, come back to it.
Like.
I, okay, so you want to go ahead and pencil in the 19th, is that correct? You want to discuss some time, who could be available? Because I'm, I'm, to be honest with you, I'm, it's possible that I'm not available on the 19th.
We're not taking action. We're not taking action. You can have comments ahead of time.
Continue the discussion on the 19th?
Sure.
If any comments, submit them.
Can we, if we can't make it, can we send comments?
We need to make sure we can have a quorum before we get too far.
Oh, we're going to have a quorum.
If we're already down three.
I'm available on the 19th.
I currently don't have any plans, however, that is, within a week, that typically I'm not here, so.
We could have another baby any day, so I, I can't promise the 19th.
So it's, it's, it's an expected quorum that might, like, like any other meeting, people don't show up and we don't have a quorum. That's what it is.
Yeah.
We've got the material ready anyhow.
Pencil it in. I mean, it's, I mean, I, I don't, I don't want to go, we don't want to make the effort, as a board, in my opinion, to get everybody here. Unfortunately, it's just not realistic. But at the same point in time, we're trying to give some input back to Darren, and I would really hope that those who are not able to make it on the 19th, possibly me included, would be able to give our thoughts and some writing.
And remember, we're always available for individual consultation.
Are we writing down the 19th? Got a pen here. I mean, I don't know whether to put it, ink or a pencil here.
Do we want to confirm the 19th as a board? Or do anybody, anybody want to propose a different day? And see if it's, is there, is any day available? Well, two weeks from today is, is January 19th.
I mean, Alex raised a point. It could be next week, too, if you, if it's, as soon as, we can continue to talk about this next week.
Is available? No, wait.
I have a meeting.
Two weeks.
19th it is, then?
19th. Let's, let's do the 19th.
Do the 19th.
Same time, 4 o'clock?
Same time.
Same time, 4 o'clock.
Again, if anybody else, I mean, we're not taking action. No action being taken.
And any, any zoning ordinance changes would, would come back to the planning and zoning board, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yes, so then, of course, guys, that's what we.
Yeah, we hold a hearing.
Yeah, we'd hold a hearing.
You'd hold, yes, you'd hold a hearing. We're, we're just, we're, I'm trying to get there. I'm trying to, you're raising some of the pitfalls that we're trying to get through, and I need your eyes, because you have a well-experienced set of eyes here that help.
Yeah. Well, and that's why I want to always defer to you where we are. Okay. So with that, we're going to end this and table it to the 19th at 4 o'clock in this same building. Any, any other business anybody wants to bring up? The next meeting that we have, we will be welcoming a new board member. So Bruce Eronomus, he is not evil compared to the, he just was not here tonight.
He available on the 19th?
Well, we may be welcoming him on the 19th. We'll see where we are with that in staff. So if there's no more agenda items, I'll take a, a motion to.
A move to adjourn the regular meeting at 6:26.
Second.
Motion made by Matt, second by David. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we are adjourned.